Let us here again to lead us in prayer, if you'd be willing. Thank you.
Good evening. Let's pray. Lord, we thank you for this night and thank you that you've given us another day just to enjoy your creation. And God, we're so grateful for the town that we get to live in here in Tonny Town. And pray for all of our leaders, the mayor, the councilmen and women, and just everyone who serves in our community, God, that you keep our first responders safe, help them to do a great job just keeping us safe. God, even being here the other night and seeing the differences of opinions and things, God, it's good. It's good for our community. And as iron sharpens iron, so one man sharpens another. And God, we pray that at the end of the day, we can please you, but we can have a great community to live in for us, for our children and our grandchildren. We pray all this in your son, Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor.
I'd like to call the September 4th Committee of the whole meeting to order, please. Roll call.
Misty?
Here.
Mike?
Here.
Daniel?
Here.
Amber?
Here.
Tim?
Here.
Larry?
Here.
Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Next, I seek approval of our agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. Roll call.
Mike?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Amber?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Misty?
Yes.
Next, we'll have comments from our citizens. Please try to refrain from speaking over three minutes about any subject not on the agenda tonight.
Good afternoon. Kenneth Lovett, 18702 Clearwater Road. I'm still kind of frustrated with the changes in the agenda and the two week, two meetings in a week. So anyway, I don't know if he'll accept it, but I want to pass this to Mr. Tino and he can read it or pass it along to anybody else here who wants. The name of this book is Leadership and Self-Deception: Getting Out of the Box. One of the passages on it, it says, "One person in an organization, by being in the box and failing to focus on results, provokes his or her coworkers to fail to focus on results as well. Collusion spreads far and wide, and the end result is that coworkers position themselves against coworkers, work groups against work groups, departments against departments. People who came together to help an organization succeed actually end up delighting in each other's failure and resenting each other's successes." Thank y'all.
Thanks.
Anyone else?
Jerry Bowen, address 235 East Henry to Tonny. May take just a hair longer, but I want to apologize I wasn't here Tuesday. My dad had surgery and some cancer removed. So anyway, I'll get on this as quick as I can so I can get through my deal. I stand here today to address behaviors and decisions, not only risking damaged individual reputations, but more importantly, threatening the standards this governing body is meant to uphold, and I believe it still does. First and foremost, I want to speak about leadership. Over the past year and a half, I've completed FBI Lita Supervisor Institute, Command Institute, Executive Institute. I've earned a trilogy award with FBI Lita. I'm currently the only officer in the state who's completed FBI Lita's five-star Chief Executive Institute. Through these and other professional development courses, I've learned a great deal about integrity, responsibility, what it truly means to lead. As leaders, we are accountable for those we lead. We accept and there's failures, and we give them credit for their successes. Leadership is not about authority, it's about integrity. Integrity, simply put, is doing what's right when no one's watching. It means being honest, transparent, and consistent. It means owning our decision and not shifting blame onto others. In the matter of concerning the city's IT service, I want to be clear, I'm not a decision maker, nor did I purchase equipment for the fire department, or the city police server, or did I sign a contract. Despite that, at times, I've been publicly drawn into discussions that I had very little to do with. What I do, what I did is speak honestly about the services Mr. Lloyd was providing at the time. We were having issues with the IT company. Mr. Lloyd stepped up and resolved problems quickly and efficiently. That is my experience, and I stand by that statement. I was asked by Mayor Russell to look over agreement with telecom. I recall raising concerns about a particular sentence, something I interpreted as a non-compete clause, and I recommended the mayor speak with the city attorney. I also said at that time that there is a way to hire Mr. Lloyd, it was worth considering based on his performance. I now recognize involving myself in the matter may have been a mistake, made with good intention, but it's a mistake nonetheless. This brings me my next point, accountability. True leadership means holding ourselves to the same standards we expect from others. It means taking responsibility, even when it's uncomfortable. I take responsibility for not speaking up sooner. I remain quiet out of concern for my job and the job of others in the police department. I was told there was a list of employees, including myself, that were being considered for termination. I know now, I don't know how or why that list was originated, I can only make assumptions. In hindsight, I should have spoken out earlier. I should have stood by my standard I spent my entire career upholding, but I can say this with a clear conscience, that my moral compass has always guided my actions. To the citizens of Tonny Town, I know there are those who want change. I don't necessarily disagree. I've always treated every citizen who's reached out to me with respect, regardless of their views, and that won't change. I'm not here today to quietly accept false accusations or shoulder blame that is not mine. I am here because I believe in standing firm, speaking the truth, and upholding the standard our community expects from its leaders. When blame is misplaced, when integrity is compromised, and when reputations are used to shield poor decisions, we all lose trust of the public. I urge this council to hold each of us, regardless of the title, to the same high standard we demand of those who lead. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mick Wagner, 409 Pinzo Avenue. Keep it short, but I asked an alderman, and they weren't here. I realize you don't comment back, but hopefully after this one, you would answer this question. Since the meeting was, and I understand why, moved from Tuesday night, do y'all get paid two times or just one?
I'm going to answer that. I don't know.
That's the same answer I got from somebody else. So I only ask that to bring it up. The code is unclear. So, but if you are getting paid again, then I only ask this. The fact that the agenda wasn't put out in a timely fashion, that's not the first rodeo. It's happened several times in the last few months. So if y'all are getting paid twice, then I don't know. I believe in, you know, everybody makes mistakes, but not repeatedly. Maybe you're over your head. Thank y'all.
Anyone else? Online? All right, moving on to old business. We have a discussion on the flooring replacement for City Hall. Mayor?
Thank you. Mr. Burris, I believe that there was a question on whether we wanted to do carpet tile laminate, carpet tile or laminate. I was not at the last meeting whenever you discussed this, but I know that you had concerns on it. Council, I think the first thing that we should do is decide whether we want carpet, laminate, or tile. And then we can move forward from there.
Do you have anything? I've got, I've got something on this, but I'll let you speak.
You go ahead.
Okay, I'll probably offend you, and not meaning to, but...
It's all right.
Okay. Here's, here's my deal. Okay, you wanted to talk about vinyl. I had a vinyl wood look placed in my home, supposedly the best you could buy, three or four years ago. I couldn't tell you the exact date. It butts up just like wood, they fit in together, but some of the seams where it's high traffic are breaking off along the edges, and now they're coming up. And if that's the best that we can do with the high traffic and the chairs and stuff that we've got here, I think it would be a terrible mistake to put that in at a higher price to have that happen. That's my take on it. Anyone else? Tim, you've got it.
I think somebody down there just moved. Was that Danny?
Yeah, I mean, I can go, and you're right. I mean, the LVP or the LVT, those grooves do end up breaking over wear and tear. So that's where if you're going to look at going with something other than carpet, ceramic tile would probably be your next best bang for your buck. You're going to hit, you're going to hit the wallet pretty bad. If we wouldn't have spent the money on the IT stuff, we would actually have $45,000. But nonetheless, it's a big chunk of change. So looking at an economic standpoint, I think carpet might be the best option for us.
Misty, do you have anything?
Yes. So I researched this several different ways, and we're gonna, if we're going to leak, we're going to have some problems. But also, I had other concerns like sound. This is a business meeting. We do lots of meetings in here. The sound, the slickness for safety. And then once seeing all these bids and the overall cost, I mean, we're only getting so much back from insurance, and we've got to look at the cost overall for the money we're spending of the city's money. It's not our money. And carpet seems to be the most efficient way to do it.
You guys know I know very little about all manner of things. And so I have to work really hard to learn anything I need to know to sort of speak out here, right? But mold is one area where our family has become experts, unfortunately. And first, it's important to note that while our City Hall was remediated cheaply, it wasn't remediated correctly. And here's what I mean by that. Correct mold remediation would have set up negative air pressure with giant tubes of air exiting the building. We would have had these huge giant plastic walls set up all over the place, and the workers could not have come inside without hazmat suits on. Because that's the proper way when you've got a mold problem, which we know that we had. So then the carpet would have been sprayed with a type of alcohol. It would have then been cut into smaller squares, which would have been double bagged, hand carried out of the building through the containment walls. What our city did was inexpensive, and that's, you know, there's something to be said for that, especially from a guy who likes to pinch a penny. But it wasn't the correct way to handle it. So as a result, although we already had mold spores in the building, mold spores, more mold spores were spread, not just from here, but they were spread throughout the building. One health expert who specializes in cancer recovery, Katrina Fo is her name, she reports that mold is the number one driver of cancer. For all of her patients, she tests them for mold toxicity, and only one of her cancer patients over the last two decades has tested negative to mold toxicity. It's so common a problem among cancer patients because it has been proven to cause cancer. It's crucial that we do the safest and healthiest thing for our City Hall employees, not the cheapest thing. Let that sink in. You guys know I act like every time we spend a dollar, it's bleeding out of my checking account, but this is important. The safety and health of our staff workers has got to be a priority that we actually spend some money on. There are plenty of things that waste city money, but caring for our city staff is not a waste of money. One square foot of carpet contains millions of fibers which act like a sponge, my coat toxins. One of our mold specialists, a guy named Dr. Matt Kelly, says that people who are health-focused should never, ever have carpet in their homes and workplaces because it holds mold spores for the life of the carpet. The spores can be minimally vacuumed up with what's called a ULPA vacuum. That's better than a HEPA vacuum, which you might be familiar with. But still, mold spores cannot be entirely removed from carpet. Carpet should never, ever be steam cleaned or cleaned with water. Why? Because the water causes more mold growth. Our flooring guy that we used at our house used to also work in mold remediation, and he also worked in the insurance business. And he calls carpet a mold sponge, as do other knowledgeable professionals. When we didn't know better, and we went shopping for carpet two years ago, and we mentioned that we had a mold problem that we had discovered behind our walls, we were cautioned against ever owning carpet by the carpet salesman. Every carpet salesman we met said, "Don't do it." Our own doctor, a guy named Dr. Martin Hart, who's a mold specialist, recommended luxury vinyl planks, that's the LVP on the list, instead of carpet. There are different levels of LVP. They can be very easily cleaned. Mold can be entirely removed from the surface. They're resistant to mold growth. They're cheaper than other wipeable surfaces like hardwood floors or tile planks. And when you get those little edge problems, they can be removed by our own staff and replaced. I want to save the city money, I really do. But I also know the extreme dangers associated with mold, and I don't think it's right to endanger our city staff and anyone who comes into City Hall with mold and myco toxins. With that said, the LVP quote, the lowest one that we had, was somewhere around $25,000. And I talked to a guy today who's confident that he can actually beat that price on the material and the install, which would mean that we come out of pocket as a city, just a few hundred, I'm sorry, just a few thousand dollars over the amount that the insurance company would give us.
Amber?
I just, it's really hard. Mold is very common. In order to, you know, have the best health you can possibly have, you'd have to eliminate mold in every environment that you enter. And I just, I just wouldn't be for paying the most for flooring for, I just, I can't justify spending that on this flooring. I'm for the carpet tile at the cheapest amount. You're never going to eliminate mold, ever, in every building, in every store you go shop at. You're just, you're never going to. And so some people have more mold sensitivities than others. It's even in a little bit in my family, but not my personal family, but some extended family. But that's, going to a more expensive flooring, in my opinion, is kind of the extreme. In one general, like you're in this building. Anyway, that's my opinion. I'll quit on that. I just wouldn't be for anything more than the carpet tile at the least amount.
So just, just so I'm 100% clear, that $4,000 difference is enough of a difference for the health and safety of everybody?
Well, and it is more than that, too. It is the sound and the echoing. I am very concerned with that. And I know you said in the hospital...
And that was a tile, by the way, not an LVP. LVP soaks up the sound better.
Yeah, yeah.
Sorry to interrupt you. I'm so sorry.
Nope, nope. That's okay.
I mean, I can have a...
I do like that the carpet squares are replaceable as well. If one were to get stained. I do like how absorbing carpet is with sound, so...
Well, to kind of echo back to Mr. Arndamani's comment, you know, when I constructed my house back in '21, I did the LVP, and my stuff was like $8 a linear foot, or a square foot. The stuff we're looking at is in the range of three to four bucks. So, I mean, and mine still does the same thing as what Larry's has talked about. And I tried to be a DIY and do it myself. I ended up having to pull out a lot more than I thought and hiring some guys to come and take care of it for me. I just couldn't get them to re-lock back together. So I think it'd be difficult for, you know, to bring in someone from, I'm assuming you mean the Parks Department or Street Department.
Oh, I just meant somebody. I'm telling you, my floor guy told me that. Again, my floor guy's confident that he can beat the $25,740 number. So let me ask this, Amber. If the LVP were the same price or less than that $21,000 price on the carpet, would you then do that if it came in at $20,000? Or do you still want carpet?
I'm still concerned with the sound and the echoing as well.
Okay.
If I can speak?
Oh, go ahead.
Sorry. Okay. We, Megan had spoke with several different companies, and every single one of them said that the acoustics there would be issues with, and every single one of them recommended the carpet. Here's one of them. I believe carpet tile is your best or your great option, your best option. And that has to do with the mold. They, what one of them told her, and I'm repeating because I know that she said this at the last meeting, if it's the tiles or the, not the LVP...
Luxury vinyl plank?
The luxury vinyl, yes. The luxury vinyl. The water still can seep in, no matter how you seal it, and it, the mold can get underneath there, and it can be harder and more difficult to deal with.
But the LVP retards the mold growth.
And so does, so does some of the carpets that now are antibacterial.
You know what? I don't want to sound like I'm trying to beat up everybody's ideas. I'm just telling you, as somebody who's had kids that have had huge health issues, and this isn't just my family. There are hundreds of thousands of people all over the country that are dealing with these sorts of things. More and more doctors are dealing with this sort of thing. I'm just one vote. It sounds like I'm probably not going to win this one, but I do want to go on record, just, number one, thank you for hearing me out, and number two, just really concerned about going down that path. There are ways to tamp down sound. There are ways to deal with all sorts of things. So if it's untenable, if there's just no way that we're ever going to do LVP, I understand that. But it will unfortunately affect those who come into this building on a regular basis. I don't work here every day. The mayor does. Lots of other people do. I'm only here a couple times a month.
Mike?
I guess, just, I mean, I appreciate what your family's going through and you're bringing us this knowledge. The mold was probably in more than the carpet. The mold, if it wasn't remediated correctly, probably wasn't remediated from the drywall, ceiling tiles. So it's probably in other places as well. Whatever floor we go with, probably not going to solve the problem if we have a mold problem here. I mean, if we were going to remediate, and I don't know what the testing showed for the whole building, but, you know, it's probably still exists everywhere. So I think the carpet tiles are probably the way to go in this room in particular. Other offices may be different, but for this room, particularly because of what we do here, I think the carpet tiles are the better solution.
Yeah. I mean, I think that we, you got two ways to look at it. You look at it from the safety standpoint that Tim's vocalized about, and you would go with the porcelain tile at that point. But if you're going from a cost-effective, you go to the carpet. But I like that compromise, Mike, you know, do carpet in here and do porcelain in the other areas, the office areas where people are in, day in and day out, Monday through Friday. So that's not, that's a nice compromise.
That is...
Oh, go ahead. Sorry. Nope, go ahead.
What I was going to say, it will cost us more to do it that way, to have two different tile or styles coming in done, in my opinion, and that's means very little. In my opinion, it's better to do all carpet or all tile because you will get a reduced rate. And we did have another bid come in, but it came in late, so I, we didn't get it in here because it was late, late.
Was it more or less?
By the way, ceramic tiles get really dirty, and the grout gets really dirty. They're easily cracked.
Yes.
I mean, they're really expensive, and...
And the water does seep through. I can tell you that from experience.
That's correct. Yeah, so I do like compromise.
These carpet tiles, you can literally just pull them up, get rid of them, put them in a trash bag, and replace them.
It's not easy to, to speak against something, you know, when you're, when you're needing something, when your, when your family's affected. I cannot talk today. I'm fumbling over everything.
You're doing great.
I know the difficult time that your family's had with mold, and I don't mean to sound insensitive. I really don't. I can't, I can't even imagine. I can't even put myself in those shoes. So I don't mean to sound insensitive with, with the direction that I'd like to go. But again, I am just, just one vote, so...
Yeah, that's, that's fine. If there were a way, and by the way, I think you're doing fine. I don't feel like, like you're being harsh in any way or fumbling at all. If there were a way to fix the sound issue, if we had the luxury vinyl plank, would that be enough for you to consider it?
Well, the sound is the biggest thing, but then just the durability.
Yep.
Hearing from Larry, hearing from Danny, and then just the additional cost to buffer that sound. I don't, I just don't think it would justify. I don't think it would be enough for me.
All right.
Me, my single vote.
Thank you for hearing me out. I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
With that being said...
Would you, I'm sorry, would you guys be willing to do LVP in the offices instead of tile?
I mean, if you're talking from a safety standpoint, I'd say you just go all the way up to the ceramic tile and you seal it. If you seal this ceramic tile every two years or so, you should keep that grout to where it's not absorbing any kind of water and letting mold cultivate and live inside that grout.
And you'd rather do that than LVP?
If you're going to look at it from a safety standpoint, yeah, I'd rather spend the big bucks of $45,000 or $55,000 and do it that way. But from a cost-effective and worrying about the citizens' money, I think the carpet's probably the best way to go. And when you look at it, you've got, you know, basically two of them that I'm looking at. And it looks like one company gave us two quotes on carpet, one's with weekend and, and I think removal of furniture and stuff like that. Where's the other one? They're coming in the daytime during work hours. I think we could do a little bit of remodel, basically where we're living, you know, the city's living in a remodel and save a little bit more, even, you know?
Yeah.
If they have to make chambers into a couple offices for a couple people while they're doing offices, and save that a little bit to where we're not paying nights and weekends and all that good stuff.
Yeah, I agree. Okay, well, I do like the idea of sealing the tile, but it's so crazy expensive. I don't, I don't think that necessarily makes sense. But I appreciate you guys hearing me out. Whatever you guys want to do is totally fine. I get it.
Well, I can tell you, after looking at all of the tile samples and the whole offices were full of, we even had them in Pat's office, because of the luxury look of the carpet, I would ask to look at the Miller carpet. That was the one that looked the nicest and more luxurious. And it was also the most cost-effective.
Are we able to get some samples?
Yeah. Need to do some, you know, set up some temporary desks in here. They do, you know, if Mr. Latham's office is affected, Mr. Latham and James Clark could come in here, work in here. They do their offices. Once they're done, they do over here on the mayor's side. They move into here for temporary, do their offices, you know, just play a little bit of musical office.
Well, if we can get this taken care of quickly, we have people that's going out of town.
Very good. Well, I would like to make a motion that we accept the M&M tile for the $21,754.77.
Second. As opposed to Miller, which is the, the most economical one, or...
That one has a night and weekend.
Oh, okay. Got it. Got it.
I believe that was the difference.
And M&M also moves the furniture?
Yeah.
Miller does not.
Did I hear a second?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Roll call.
Mike?
Yes.
Tim?
I vote no, but I want to kindly support my fellow council members.
Larry?
Yes.
Amber?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Misty?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Moving on, we have a discussion of the sewer rates. Mr. Clark?
Is that what this is? Good evening. As you all know, we've talked the last couple of meetings about the sewer rates, and we do have a public hearing scheduled for the, prior to the council meeting on the 16th. That will be the opportunity for all citizens to come and make their concerns known. I mean, obviously, if there's anyone here tonight that wants to speak about it as well, I guess they can. But the public hearing is actually on the 16th. I put a spreadsheet on your desk there that looks like this, if you haven't found it yet, just to give you a little bit of an idea about where we are and why we need to have a rate increase. And if you remember, we did a rate increase last year in October, and I told you at that time, I said, "We're going to have to do another one this year," and of about the same amount. And that's, that's kind of what we're looking at, an average of 15% over the three different categories, the residential, commercial, and industrial. But as I mentioned during the presentation by Waterworth at the last meeting, we're not going to apply that increase across the board. We're going to break that up, only increase the residential customers by 10%, commercial by 15%, and then industrial by 25%. But if you look at your, uh, the spreadsheet I gave you, um, just to give you a little bit of an idea about, uh, what rates do for us, um, in that top group up there, there's, uh, January through July, you've got sewer sales, and then sewer sales to waste management, then a total sales line, and then a total revenue line. And revenue would be anything other than sewer sales like tap fees, insure, or interest rates, uh, interest that we draw on, uh, um, on some funds, but it's not much over what the, uh, the actual rates generate. As a matter of fact, um, if you look on to the right there, you see sales versus revenue, um, total revenue is only, uh, about thirty-two thousand dollars more than what we, uh, generate by sewer sales. And the percentage of, uh, revenue from sewer sales is just over ninety-seven percent. So that's a huge part of our, of our income. And, uh, down below, uh, I gave you a little bit of information there about, uh, expenses. Um, we've got the NACA charges in the, in the first, uh, column, uh, total sewer expenses in the second column, and then expenses minus the NACA payment. And as you can see on the fourth column, the percentage of payment to NACA is seventy-four percent of our, uh, budget expenses. If you go back up to the, the top under the year-to-date, uh, where it says sixteen-point-six percent increase, that's an average of ten, fifteen and twenty-five. So if we, if this passes, uh, that would generate approximately a hundred and eighty-nine thousand through, would have through the first seven months of this year. Uh, and then back down to the bottom, the only red number on the page is, uh, the revenue versus expense, and you can see we're negative about two-hundred thousand dollars. So just, uh, there's been a lot of, uh, uh, talk on social media, um, and I'm going to try to get some more information out here in the next, uh, couple of weeks before the, uh, council meeting and the public hearing. Um, I hope everyone can understand a little bit about why we have to do it. Um, and if you look at the, the newspaper at all, you're seeing it in every city in Northwest Arkansas. Unfortunately, it's, you know, the cost of doing business is, is getting higher every day. Uh, the treatment cost is going up, we just went through a, or still going through a plant expansion at NACA, that was about an eighty-five million dollar project. We'll be seeing the, actually, we've seen the, some of the interest payments already, but, uh, once that, uh, bond finalizes, we'll be seeing an increase of about forty-thousand dollars a month on our NACA bill. So, we're trying to, trying to get built up to that point, but, uh, you know, and I mentioned it before, but originally there was a sales tax subsidy, and a couple of years ago that went away, and unfortunately, we're still trying to make up for that, and the only way to do that's with rates.
I've got two questions for you.
Yes.
Um, so, refresh my mind, do we, what are we currently charging on our impact fees? Are we still at a twenty-five or fifty percent?
Fifty percent.
So, in your opinion, if we were at a hundred percent back when we started slowly increasing that, do you think that would help out on this?
With rates, no.
No?
No, because that goes into a separate account.
Gotcha.
It's not, can't use it for maintenance and operations.
Mm-hmm. But my thinking on that is, if we had that money for the maintenance, the money that we have for the maintenance now, we could be putting, you know, moving money basically. Does that make sense? Any money that we have for maintenance and repairs, if we had the, uh, increased impact rates, that money would be retained over there for that purpose, and any money that we might have to pull out of our operating budget wouldn't go to any maintenance? Is that?
Um, well, you can't use the, the impact fee for maintenance and operations, it's only for extending sewer service or water service.
But we don't use any of our operating funds now to do any of that?
No.
Okay. Um, and my next question, um, the red negative two-hundred-and-eight thousand versus the hundred-and-eighty-nine thousand, it sounds like we're still behind the eight ball, even if we do it this increase.
Just a little bit, we're, we're definitely getting closer. Of course, that's an average percent increase, so.
But it's based off those numbers, correct?
Right.
From January to July?
Right.
So, I would think if I was doing the math on that, I would try to either get it even or just a little bit past it so that we're in the, we're not in the red.
Right.
So, I feel like we're going to do it, and we're going to have citizens mad at us for it, and you know, they don't see the, not all of them see this and understand this, but yet we're still going to be in the red. And so, I'd rather us be in the positive and take that sting and, you know, hear that we're taking their money.
Yeah, I mean, we've talked about the, the percent increase, and honestly, we're going to have to have, like we do with water, we're going to have to have a sewer rate increase every year. It won't have to be this much. The last, last year and this year, we're trying to play makeup a little bit or catch up. Um, and hopefully next year, we're, we're looking at something less than ten percent.
Gotcha. And that actually brings me up, I mean, we didn't ask if there's any citizen comment on this, so we might ask citizens here. We've got a pretty good crowd.
Any other questions for me?
Yeah, yes, I, I do. If we want to do comments first, that's fine, but I'll, I'll, I'll definitely have some questions for you.
Sure. If, if there is a citizen out there that would like to comment on, on this, please, feel free.
We do have a public hearing coming up, and, but, that's fine.
I guess my question would be, just like Daniel was saying, what's the percent to where we wouldn't be in the red? And it's just a initial sting instead of a million paper cuts every single year, we're getting a water increase, a sewer increase, a trash incre- whatever, because it comes from everywhere, not just within the city. That's what you guys can control, obviously, or kind of help control. So, that would be my question, is if there's a actual percent that would bring us over and not have it every single year?
Excuse me, ma'am, did you, did you leave your, uh, did you state your name?
Oh, I'm so sorry, uh, Megan Morgan, uh, nine-five-six Clank Road.
Nine-twenty Clank Road?
Uh, and nine-twenty, technically we own nine-five-eight-two.
Thank you.
Thanks.
James, I think, made a good presentation, but one thing I think's been overlooked, uh, is that, uh, currently, uh, you're a very small part of NACA's flow, but when you start comparing Tawny Town's sewer rates to somebody like Bentonville or Springdale or any of the big ones, you're spreading your fixed cost over two or three thousand connections. They've got thirty or forty thousand connections. You're never going to be comparable in price. Uh, but right now, the one good thing to say is you've got sewer. Uh, P Ridge is out of capacity, Centerton's out of capacity, Cave Springs was out of capacity, but it just got to NACA. So, you're always going to have high sewer, but that's the price of doing poker in Northwest Arkansas.
Thanks, sir. Anyone else? James, back to the podium, I think you're going to be questioned again.
Yeah, um, I, I appreciate the questions and then the comments, so they're, they're very helpful, and I thank you, uh, for putting this together, it, it shed some light on what we're doing. You know, I think everybody should know that we don't take rate increases lightly, they affect us just like they affect everybody else, and we're merely trying to pass along the increase that we're getting from NACA. Um, they did bring up a couple of good questions, though, about what is that percentage, do we have a number for what that percentage would be to get us out of the black? And maybe to follow up on that before, you, obviously, the eye-popping number down at the bottom for the, uh, the industrial, should that go into effect? Does that eliminate the need for a, a further percentage increase on residential, commercial customers?
I mean, not really, uh, uh, because that, that's a, just a base rate, so that's collected once a month, so it's twelve thousand dollars a year.
Okay.
Basically just to help maintain the, the lift station.
Okay, but if I understand correctly, that is probably not even enough to help maintain the lift station from what's going on?
Well, that in conjunction with the, the increased rates, remember, we're raising the industrial rate twenty-five percent.
Okay. So, is that number figured in to the, that's the total of the sixteen-point-six?
Right.
Is included in that total? So, we've probably, all right, all right, I got you.
And I very quickly put this together this afternoon, I can certainly take some more time and, uh, because the usage from the industrial customer is greater than the usage from commercial. Uh, so we're going to see a, a bigger percentage of that.
Sure.
Uh, increase in our, in our revenues.
And one other thing, this may not be germane, I don't know, I don't know the answer to this question, obviously, but, um, putting the rate from fifteen dollars to one thousand dollars, not the base rate, does the Public Service Commission have any input in that at all?
We're not regulated by a Public Service Commission.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Clark?
Yes?
Uh, if I understand correctly, we have only one entity in town that currently fits into that industrial, we're not talking light industrial, it's industrial, there's one, is that right?
Okay.
So then the, uh, the light industrial would fall under other commercial?
Right.
Okay.
Correct.
Uh, i- if you'd be so willing, you know, impact fees are something that, that I, um, although I don't like imposing them, I think that they've been very necessary. Um, so I want to start by asking Mr. Eichman a question, uh, based on something that you had said earlier. Is it possible to in any way divert where those impact fees go, or is that a state law or a federal law that those impact fees go in, uh, only for?
It's, it's in the state law.
Okay.
Yeah, it is, is in state law, and it has to, it can't go to O and M, it's got to go to, um, capital projects that are impacted by future growth.
Okay, thank you.
Um, that's, that's the way that's got to.
Okay, great. So, right now, uh, there's, there's a, there's a big red number there, which means that we're not taking it enough to even sustain. We're giving that as a gift, you're welcome, Tawny Town, um, to what we're doing. Um, but, yes, I think it's important for us to get up to the black, I think people understand that. Um, I think it was, uh, Mr. Wagner who said that there are certain fixed costs, and there's, they're spread over a smaller number, so I think people understand that sort of thing if we have those discussions. Uh, but presuming that we actually made a net positive, where would those monies go? I know we're not doing that now, but let's say that we made a hundred thousand dollars in revenues, where would that money go?
Well, uh, what didn't get used up in actual maintenance and operation would go into, uh, reserve for, uh, future projects.
Okay, so, um, I don't mean to put words in your mouth, so please correct me if I'm wrong, not only are we losing two-hundred-and-eight thousand dollars, but then we have our own maintenance and everything else that goes into it, employees, et cetera. So that's just the, the negative from sales versus revenue. So we're losing enough money that, again, I would like to see that number, uh, trued up a little bit, and maybe it's so big that we just can't do it, but if we could look at that and see what do we do to sort of stair-step going forward. Um, as far as impact fees go, you guys know how I feel about that, and I do believe this needs to be at a hundred percent, um, but we can't continue to find ourselves in binds like this because we haven't done what's right up to now, right? Whether that be impact fees or raising rates or whatever it happens to be. So I'm not blaming you, I'm not blaming anybody, but here we sit, and we've got a problem that needs to be rectified. And again, I think if we communicate that appropriately, people understand it, costs go up. Thank you.
And like I mentioned too, until two, maybe three years ago, uh, we were being subsidized, uh, in the sewer by, uh, part of a sales tax, so.
Yeah.
Taking that out took about half a million dollars a year out of, out of the budget, yeah.
Understood.
Mike?
Yeah. Um, could you remind me, uh, I don't have the Waterworth presentation, uh, in front of me, but it, this is a purposeful percentage increase right now, and w- w- we wanted to do it in smaller steps because eventually, because of growth and a few other things, our cash position will come up. I- i- if we don't do anything, it falls completely off the map.
Right.
But if we do these steps, then our cash position becomes more solid over time, the increases become less and less. I think it's three years, five years, if I remember right, five years may have been the, like a three to five percent, and then hold steady at, at a pretty small percentage after that. So, do, do we stick with what we got now, or do we go back to the drawing board and say, and I know it's hard because we got to bring this up in two weeks and say, okay, what is the percentage we need right now to get us to the black? And, and do that tough step, and then we can reassess again in a year, maybe we don't need the, the fifteen percent next year, maybe it's a smaller percent than what was shown on our chart from the presentation a few weeks ago.
I believe the chart on, and the presentation showed fifteen percent this year and then ten next year.
Okay.
I believe that's correct.
That brings up another thing in my mind, thinking to the future, we got sales tax bond for the million dollar, or a million gallon water tank out here, but from whatever, remember, we didn't get enough to cover it, so we're still going to have to pay out of the pocket to finish paying off the contractors to build that, correct? So we've got that.
Well, yes.
We've got that ticket item to worry about, too.
Going to be borrowing that money from ANRC, but yes, we've got it, we had to pay it back.
Yeah, debt, yeah. I just, that's just something to think about, too, is, you know, we've got that future debt coming to look at us, you know, you said.
Of course, that's on the water side, too.
I feel like the sales tax that we had, the half a million, or five hundred, was it five hundred thousand you said that we lost, when we lost the sales tax, I feel like in that time while we had that, we should have been preparing to lose that in order to be more independent now that we don't have it. That hasn't happened, so we're in this predicament where we're in the red. Um, so again, I, I, I think we should look at the numbers and see where we can get to where that red number and that black number at the top, I mean, you're only twenty thousand dollars off.
Yeah, it wouldn't take much of an increase to.
It's like, I think that's the cost of some carpet or something.
So we, we can change this before the sixteenth to make us black? Or is this is over?
Yes, I mean, that's, that's Justin, I, you know, we have.
Great question.
Uh, when you adopt new sewer rates or increases, um, the, it doesn't apply to water, but it does apply to sewer, you have to publish what you're intending to do, and then you need to adopt it. Um, because sewer rates bring in so much revenue, I don't think you'd want to be in a position to put that at risk by having, having that challenged. I think the safer bet would be to arrive at what the rate would be, and I'm sorry, James, republish the, uh, notice and do it again. There's a, a, a rough case out of Fort Smith called OK Foods v. Fort Smith, where that very thing happened. Fort Smith failed to, to publish the notice before, and the court said that, yes, Arkansas Supreme Court said the ordinance was void, and Fort Smith had to pay back the sewer revenue. So, I've always been very cautious about sewer rate adoption, and, um, I would advise if we're going to tinker with it, let's run it back in a notice and have it come back here for another public hearing, or for, we could, we could simply just not hold this public hearing coming up and just redo it. I think that'd be the safer route.
I, I think that's the safer route to go, I would rather see it's in the black.
Agreed. It's better to do it right.
Yeah.
Than do it fast.
Right.
Reven- revenues are also, water revenues are also included in the total budget of the water and sewer department, right? So when you combine the two.
They are separate.
Okay, but it's separate, so, uh, i- is water in the black?
Um, I, I didn't look at those numbers today, but I would say yes.
Okay.
I don't know how much, but.
So, i- in, in the overall grand scheme of things, uh, I mean, this is your department, you're the expert in it, and what do you want to do? Do you want to redraw the, the thing to get this more to the black, or do you want to go forward with what we got? And, I mean, I, I, I'm comfortable with this just because this is something we decided, we, we decided this based on the numbers that we saw from the presentation, and we made the decision to go with this based on that presentation and the chart and, and the flow that we saw. Um, and knowing. And knowing that water may be in a better position right now, and we're not completely underwater, pun intended.
Right.
So maybe it's more prudent to do this now, and since we decided on it. But whatever you want to do, if you want to, I mean, this is your department, and we're, it seems like we're all amenable to getting it to the black, but we want to get you what you need as soon as you need it to.
I believe that if we went with the, what's presented, I mean, obviously, we're losing money now, but we won't be losing near as much, and we're still looking at, you know, we're going to have to evaluate this every year. And like I say, I think next year we're looking at 10% or less, so just to kind of make up that difference. But I certainly do whatever the council wishes, if you want to raise it even more right now. It's just a matter of publishing it again and setting up a public hearing.
You know, I think the truth is, none of us want to raise it, but the city isn't a not-for-profit, right? And it's, I've used this analogy with you before, if you run a donut shop and you lose money every time you sell a donut, you can't stay in the donut business very long.
Right.
And there's just zero way that we can continue to make loss after loss after loss and keep this whole. So either we outsource water to somebody else, or we start finding a way to make money on it. I think to continue in a way that loses money is a very bad idea, at least financially, right? Now, with that said, the citizens aren't going to like it, I don't like it. But some of those things could have been handled maybe better, maybe not, but I've got a question for you. What is our, aside from the bond and this water tower that's going up and doing well, it's great, what do we need going forward from an infrastructure standpoint? And how are we going to get that money?
That's a tough question. We are updating our 10-year plan, and we do have lift station rebuilds and new lift stations to be constructed. Thankfully, we received a huge blessing with that grant for the
Thank you Senator Womack.
The Barrington, or Gravity Line.
Yep.
Brush Creek, I'm sorry. But we do have, in our 10-year plan, projects set out every so often for, to be completed, and none of them, I even, you know, we'd have to raise rates tremendously to be able to fund those projects without some type of assistance, grants, or.
How about it, how about impact fees? If impact fees can go toward that, won't the impact fees help on that?
Yeah, that's where the impact fees would help, yes.
So, we're charging 50%, so right now, we're asking our fair citizens
Right.
that live here to pay more, and the developers who often don't live here, although some do, who are coming in and making lots of money, I'm a capitalist, I'm totally cool with that, they aren't paying their fair share, but we're asking our citizens to do so. Is that a fair statement?
Yeah, it's fair. I mean, inevitably, that cost, that impact fee, that the builders are paying is just being passed on to the home buyer.
I understand that, but again, those are people who want to come to our fair city, not those that have been here for 130 years.
But I'm certainly not opposed to bringing that back to council and going ahead with that increase.
Okay, so I think if we could see the 10-year plan, I don't know how we can make a decision moving forward on these rates unless we see the updated 10-year plan, and I know that that unravels a whole lot of stuff you're trying to do, but again, I could not agree with Councilmember Piazza Moore. We've got to do it right, not fast.
Right.
I mean, yes, let's get it fast as we can, let's work as diligently as we can, but
You use your donut shop analogy.
I love donuts.
You know, we're not selling, we're not getting everything we need for the donuts, but we're selling the heck out of coffee, if that makes sense.
Okay.
So the water side is making money.
That's good. And how much more, is it netting more than that 208,000?
I would have to, I would have to look at the numbers.
Okay, and please look at the numbers, I think you have to look at the numbers so that we know that, absolutely.
And I'll put that together and send it out in an email to the council.
Well put though, thank you.
Yeah.
Well, my last thought on it is I'd say, we come back and see if we can't come up with a better number that gets us out of the red.
Yeah, I'll see what it takes. Like I say, it's just a few percentage points, I'm sure.
I'd rather go and post it on Facebook again, and put it in the water bills, and, you know, get calls again that it's even more than it was the first time, than vote on this, get this through, and then if it's a year or even shorter than that, and come back for just a teeny tiny 10% raise. I feel like, unlike the donut shop, I think of an air tank, and I'm in the ocean, and I didn't screw my valve on all the way, and I'm losing some of that air.
Right.
If I'm going down, and I'm going down, I'm losing that air, which at the end of it, that tank's going to run out of air eventually, and then I'm SOL. So I'd rather get that tank tightened, get that nozzle tightened down, and quit bleeding out air, and hopefully make it to the bottom where I'm trying to get to, and get out of there and have some memories.
Absolutely.
If we were to table this to the next Cal, would that give you plenty of time to?
Yeah, I could still submit the public hearing notice to the newspapers, it just has to be published one time 10 days prior to the meeting, so we could schedule the meeting for the October council.
And how do we undo the one that's scheduled for the 16th?
Well, that's a little hard.
You could show up with donuts and coffee.
Right. That's a little tougher, but we'll just have to present it as an updated rate schedule.
Sure. Yeah, go ahead, I'm so sorry.
No, no. All I was going to say is, regardless of whether we get to black, next year he's coming back, so.
Well, yeah.
I don't know.
Yeah, I got a bigger tank by then.
Good luck for you.
Well, we need to make, and we talk about this a lot, and you know this, but the feelings hurt, right? But we don't want to make a feelings decision, we've got to make a mathematical one as fiduciaries for the city. So let's get there, if you don't, I mean, if that works, if we can do that, if we can undo, you know, undo this thing on the 16th, I'd really appreciate that. So I guess I will make a motion to table this to the Cal?
I'll second that.
Thank you.
I'm not sure exactly how we're going to word that, but.
I'm sorry, let me try harder. I'd like to make a motion that we table the discussion of sewer raids to the October 7th Cal meeting.
And you seconded Misty?
Yes.
Ro call.
Tim?
Yes.
Amber?
Yes.
Mike?
No.
Misty?
Yes.
Daniel?
No.
Larry?
No.
Okay, we got a tie.
I make a motion that we accept what we voted on last time we moved forward this, knowing that we're selling more coffee than donuts, our position may not be as precarious as this seems to indicate. So I make a motion that we accept, move forward with what's presented to us, with the increases that we have that are given, and go forward with the public
I'll second that.
hearing on the 16th.
Ro call.
Tim?
No.
Amber?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Misty?
No.
Daniel?
No.
Larry?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh my word.
Come on.
Now we arm wrestle, okay.
Okay, Mayor votes yes, so it's going to move to the September 16th council meeting, as well as the flooring, I said it passes, is it not? It goes to the council meeting, we're just mooning it.
Thank you.
Next. Thank you, James. Next, we have a discussion on Clint's Road as to public safety and weight restrictions. Mr. Latham, please.
I must be sick or something, it's cold back here. So if I'm shivering up here, you'll understand. At our last meeting, we talked a little bit about the ordinance that we have in front of you, I believe, that has to do with the weights on roads and what can be done, and it's really not very comprehensive, I'll be honest with you. As you know, I brought this to your attention based on the fact that, of the amount of residential facility, facilities now that are being built on Clink, that's mixed with close to 300 trucks that are coming out of landfill. And my concern has been really on the public safety side of it. What I would like to do and recommend right now is, is that, three things. One is, I really, we just purchased some strips that you can put out on the road that basically will not only look at traffic counts, but will look at the actual type of vehicle that's passing through, so whether it's a truck or a passenger car or whatever, will count that. It'll also take speed, which is something that we could address if possible, if we started looking at what we're going to do about Clink. So I'd like to conduct that. It's probably going to take a couple of weeks to set that all up and get some data for you guys to take a look at, and we can go to recommend. The other thing is, I've had a concern on the actual, how much weight is actually going through there. As you know, some of those semi-trucks that are running through there are over 80,000 pounds. I don't think that little collector's street was ever developed to handle that kind of weight. So we've made in contact with a geotech company, that's a little less than $20,000, and what they do is, they'll drill a four-inch hole into the pavement, they'll actually go down about five feet, and then they measure whatever, they compress that, and they can determine when it would actually break, and kind of get an idea about whether that road can handle that type of weight. Time to complete this would probably be about three months, and I thoroughly recommend that we do that before we make any decisions. The other thing that I'd like to do is take a look at the street map and identify collectors, and find out if, what kind of traffic's running on those to determine whether or not they need to have some kind of load limit or not on it. As you know, the streets here have been somewhat damaged based on the development, mainly on 612, especially Liberty and some of those other areas that's been running trucks up and down. So there's going to be some things that we're going to have to deal with. I do want to make a note, and I mentioned this to Mayor Russell. Know you guys have a hearing tomorrow regarding the landfill, and win or lose, things get appealed, and these appeal processes could take 10 years, I'm just telling you. It's not something that's going to be cut and dry. You're dealing with a regional landfill that takes everything we have here, including some out of state. And I really think our best interest is to look at the long-term here. I have talked to three leaders within the Northwest Arkansas, indicated to me that we need to get the leaders together and find another route for the landfill. You don't know how long this landfill is going to last, I have no idea. Some people say short-term, some people say long-term. They have 600 acres out there. And if you've ever been out there, you can kind of see what it looks like, and, but there's one route, one route's over to 112, that's currently on our future road plan. Maybe it's going west, and maybe tying into 612, but I talked with, quite lengthy, with Tim Conklin, Tim Conklin's the Northwest Arkansas Regional CEO, and told him, this is not, cannot be a tiny town problem. We are a town of 8,000 people. All these other towns are bringing everything down Clink Road, which is basically a collector for residential traffic. It's not a collector for anything else, it's residential traffic. And we got to look at a long-term solution. And I've talked to Mayor Sprouse, also talked to, I'm going to be speaking with the, what's that, Boston Mountains? I think I'm scheduled to go in front of them, that's a bunch of mayors, along with, I think the county judge, Washington County judge, and I'll make a presentation to them and tell them that this is not a tiny town problem, it's a regional problem. And we have got to get a way into that landfill that doesn't impact our residents, and it is. So that's where I'm headed. Questions?
I want to thank you for that presentation. What tactics do we have to have them get on board with that plan and pony up? I mean, is there any?
Well, I mean, you know, I mean, even if the regional planning, which is all the mayors, all of them down here, anything that's a first class or second class, if they would come up with a, I mean, they've got some future roads that actually go out west that tie Farmington into 412 at 612. I just tell you, there's a road
Kind of routed altogether.
They've outlined on that. But what I would like to see them do is come up and have a resolution in front of that board, which is the Regional Planning Board, in support of looking at alternative access to the landfill.
Yeah.
Whether it's east or west, doesn't matter to me, but they can find the funding, because you're talking about some pretty major dollars. I know the last time we looked at the road going east over to 112, it was about 20 to 25 million dollars. Well, the city of Tiny Town doesn't have that kind of money.
No doubt, yeah. And you're right, it's not just a tiny town issue.
And they could, they could go ahead and, you know, come up with a raised grant, they can do all kinds of things, a lot better than we can as a small community.
Correct.
And we've got to find a way to be able to make sure, because we don't know. I mean, I can't tell you.
Yeah.
Will they shut the landfill down in two weeks? If it's voted, it's going to be appealed, no question about that. So that's another two years, and another appeal, another appeal. But we can't let our residents just drag on without having some kind of final resolution to this, and it can't be Clink Road. So I don't have any directions for you right now, or an ordinance, but I plan, this is my plan for it. If you got your support here, then that's where I'm headed.
Yeah, I think you're right, it's a regional
Yeah.
problem, requires a regional solution. I just had a couple of, one question really, and it's about, has there been any input from Waste Management Echo Vista on their proposed solutions to what they have to know is a problem? Has there been any discussion with them about, you know, what are you guys going to do to
Well, I think the, I think the regional planning will probably bring them in, and I do think they have a financial responsibility on this. I really do.
Without a doubt.
And if they're smart enough to figure out that it's probably best for their interest in that way.
And I think there was one other concern Ms. Morgan brought about taking land from, for expansion of Clint's. I don't think you have to worry about that from the city, it's a pretty arduous process to go through any kind of
I don't, I don't see that happening. If anything, it would be curb, and you'd put a deal around, so it's not really going to, I mean, there's enough right-of-way on there to be able to curb it and keep it a two-lane, there might be a three-lane at some of the corners, you know, where people have to turn in like Wildcat or something like that, but.
And I know Barrington improvements are in the works, and I know it's, you know, I don't know if we're planning on three-laneing all the way down to Arbor Acres at some point in time, but, you know, I don't know if that's one of the proposed alternatives or not. in time, but you know, I don't know if that's one of the proposed alternatives or not.
Barrington is not.
I know it's not a great road right now. It's too curvy, you know, there's no.
Well, you know, they, they did, I did send Waste Management a letter when they were cutting across that storm sewer, across Clink, and they did comply. And Harmon is not a really good route. I mean, I mean, some of the semis, you just can't get around that corner down there. So it's not, it's not a route that could be used for a long-term period, for sure.
It's a mess, is what it is.
Yeah.
But you, Mr. Latham.
To that, you know, Harmon, maybe you just let certain trucks go that way and then the 18-wheelers can still use Clint's or something to minimize the traffic on it.
Oh, I did have one other, I'm sorry.
Okay, go ahead, Mike.
The strips, I thought when you talked to us about the strips, there was a way to measure the weight of the.
That's correct.
So that's included in it too? Okay, maybe I missed that when you just said that, sorry.
Sorry, sorry, sorry. So it's the type of vehicle, speed, weight? That's the kind of data that you'll collect from the strips?
Type of vehicle weight, the amount of traffic we currently have on it.
I like your plan.
Yep.
Thank you.
I do as well.
Misty?
Okay.
I agree. I think this is a great plan.
We'll get something back to you. We're going to have more comprehensive ordinance. And maybe there'll be very specific streets on there that really will restrict anything so that we can get those signs up, type thing. Because we've got to keep our integrity of our roads. Don't have a lot of money for.
Mr. Latham? When I was looking this over, I noticed on this that you've got various weights. Number one, this is A1, maximum single axle load, shout out exceed 20,000 pounds and the total gross, not 34,000 pounds, total maximum vehicle weight, 80,000 pounds. I mean, these are, these are big numbers. And I've done some research, extensive research shows that a loaded garbage truck can weigh 25 tons. That's over 50,000 pounds. So it's no surprise that they are such a huge contributor to the wear and tear on our roads. And then there's the, the weight that obviously is wearing things down when trucks are stopping and starting or making turns and makes all of it that much worse. Plus, they've got blind spots. They're often operating in a limited timeframe. They're trying to get things done quickly. So not only is it bad for the roads, it's bad for the people. It's bad for the kids. I mean, should an accident occur, heaven forbid, we've got major problems. So I like the idea of trying to find an alternate route. Should we make that alternate route? Should that alternate route exist? Who pays for that alternate route?
Well, it should be a total of all region. Regions are the ones that bring it into a regional landfill.
So we, as a region?
A region.
Would be pooling our money to pay one business to have their own road. Is that true?
It's not going to be their own road, but.
Wouldn't be their own road. It would be, it would be a road that everybody could use, but it would be very specific how they get in and out of that landfill.
Okay. And approximately, how long does it take to build a road like that?
Three years.
After, after R.DOT approval?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, okay. Well, I appreciate.
That's why I'd like to get going on this, because the longer we wait, the worse it's going to get.
Sure, yeah.
Agreed.
Thank you. Appreciate your hard work on this.
All right, next, we have a discussion of cellular meter reading from Mr. Clark again.
Hello again. So the guys that were here Tuesday night weren't able to come back tonight, but they will come back before the end of the year and make a presentation. They represent Badger Meter. There's also going to be representatives here. We've already scheduled it for the November meeting, representatives from Neptune Meter. So we're going to look at both, both companies, but we're kind of changing gears on the technology. Originally, we were talking about a fixed base meter reading system, which they're both fixed base, but originally we were talking about radio transmitters. There was concerns about that. There's, for one, there's quite a bit of upfront cost to get that infrastructure in place. And then secondly, Tim had mentioned the radio waves. And so we started looking at the cellular technology and it does two things for us. One, there's no upfront cost. Matter of fact, the guys that were here the other day installed 10 of their meters in the city and were able to read them right now. And if they were here, they can pull them up and show them to you, but when they come back, they'll be able to do that. And the other is, there's not that concern of radio waves. So really, by changing to this type of technology, we can, you know, just start adding meters. Like I said, the no upfront cost, what we were spending on water meters, we spend on cellular meters and just start piecing the system together. Do as many as we can, as many as we can each year and until we eventually get the whole system done. Most cities do it that way, unless some money comes up, that grant money that either through ANRC or one of the other funding agencies where we can, we can do that. And that has happened in the past. Who knows if it'll happen again? But anyway, we can, we can start moving forward once we decide which company we're going to go with. And we want to try both of them. Neptune is supposed to be here before their presentation and they're going to install some meters also. So we'll be able to look at both platforms, figure out which one is the most user-friendly. And then, of course, there's an other side to that is the, the customer portal, if you will. Which one of those is easiest for the customer to use and provides the best information? We definitely have to get to some type of automated meter reading, fixed base cellular in order to, you know, for the future. One, the biggest reason is, and we deal with this every month at billing time, because that's when we read the meters, we find out that a customer has had a leak on their, in their private system for a week, two weeks, three weeks, didn't know about it until they get their bill. With a system like this, they can set up the customer portal where it notifies them immediately if there's a leak in the line. They can set parameters, say they, they don't want to use over 500 gallons a day and they can set that parameter, they're on their smartphone, it'll send them an alert, you know, you're getting close to your daily maximum. You know, there's just a lot of information that can be provided to the customer that right now we're having to provide and it's not readily available. So somebody comes in, complains about a high bill, we, we can data log the meter, which means we take the computer out to the field, hook up to the, to the meter, and then we can pull that data for the last 90 days and be able to see where, when the leak started or how long it ran. Sometimes it's just a matter of somebody leaving a spigot on overnight or two or three days or a weekend, whatever, and you can see that. And you can show the customer, here's why your bill's high, you know, and once you, once you do that, they're usually, oh yeah, I remember that now. Didn't think it would run that much water. But anyway, it's going to be a great tool for us, save the guys a lot of time. And it's not really about the meter reading, because like I've said before, we can read all the meters in town in about four hours, the way we're doing it right now. Where it saves time is all the rereads and the mist reads and the check for leaks, all those work orders that, you know, after reading, the guys spend days going out and gathering, manually reading, gathering that information. So that, that will be a huge savings right there of time. And we're going to move that way. Fortunately, at this point, I don't know that we need approval from the council, just want to give you that information. Of course, not making a big expenditure upfront, just kind of letting you know that this is the way we're headed.
I have a couple of things. You said it's no upfront cost, but is it the everyday cost of adding them? Is it less expensive than what the other option you were looking at? Or is it about the same?
The everyday cost?
Like just as we're adding them, is it like, I know, no upfront, but maybe I missed?
Yeah, the only difference in the cellular versus the fixed base is you pay a cellular fee.
Okay.
And that amounts to about a dollar a month per meter.
Okay. And then I also just want to say thank you. I think the technology is definitely where we need to go. Thank you for looking at other options. Thank you, Tim, for bringing up the, what to look at. And we wanted to maybe go a different route due to the radio. It's something I personally didn't know much about. So thank you for your efforts and thank you for continuing to look for a way for us to move into technology, because I do see this as a great need for us.
Certainly. Thanks.
I like the features of the cellular meter, at least how you described it. And was I the only one that thought of, when you said you could set your daily limits of your water shutting off mid-shower? Anybody else have that thought?
Well, it doesn't actually shut it off. It just gives you an alert.
No, I figured it didn't, but that was, I thought, that's hilarious. Anyway, that is a neat feature, being able to even set your daily limit.
Right.
Are you, are you bringing that up because your girls are in the room?
Yeah.
That's not more, I can't see his hair.
I have a question for you. The cellular meters, how much do those cost roughly if you don't?
They're about a hundred dollars more than the meters we're buying right now.
Gotcha. And I know your budget, you typically budget to buy new meters each year.
Usually about 75,000 is what I budget each year. I've put more in that, more than that in next year, but I'm probably going to have to cut some of that to make my budget balance, so.
Yeah, okay.
I'll probably end up about the same, same amount.
Gotcha. Okay. Thanks, sir.
We have any citizens come, comment on this?
I only make the comment because I've had experience with the meters that Badger produces when I was at Washington Water, which has about 8,500 connections versus 3,000 something. The thing that James did mention, which from a user standpoint is very nice, is they have a little app called I Own Water. And you can set a flow and to your point about turning off your shower, if it goes above that, you get a text that says your water flow has exceeded, your predetermines that limit. So each, each person can use it. And the good thing about it, the house that my daughter lives in, I can tell when she's filling her pool. I can also tell when she does load the laundry, because I'll get a notice and hear it years ago. But there's a lot of benefit, more than just what he says. What James didn't allude to is AWA, while it doesn't have a hard and fast rule of percentages of replacements of meter, it encourages about a 10% replacement value per year. Is that right? And so James is right. I mean, just to, just to comply with the standard, it's the bible of the water industry. He'd be replacing, what, 200 meters a year? Something like that. But I think once the people got this app and got, got used to it, they're going to, your customers are really going to like it.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right.
You know, I hate to be the one who keeps bringing up like all the health stuff, because trust me, I'm not the healthiest guy in the room. But here I am. This isn't just about radio frequencies, it's about EMFs, which is what I had mentioned last time as well. And I understand, I'm probably alone here, it's very cool technology, but EMFs are very unhealthy. I've checked with lots of doctors, lots of things. I actually wear an EMF blocker on my bracelet, lots of my family members do, because there, there is danger to that, to having the, even with the cellular, the EMFs traveling around. So I understand, again, that I'm alone. I think it's very cool technology. I want to do everything we can to try to help James and his crew save time and effort. But it's, you know, some years ago, this council, whoever was sitting here at the time, thought that putting a landfill in town was a great idea. And we have learned the horrific health dangers of that over time. And I fear that this same thing is going to happen to us. And again, as a fiduciary of the Public Safety and Trust, I just can't support it. I'm sorry.
Anyone else? All right, so, moving on. Now we have a discussion of pipe bids. Let me see, who's that? Mr. Clark?
It's my lucky night. This will be very short. If you notice in your packet, there is a bid tabulation sheet for the bid opening that was held on September 1st. We didn't get very good bids. In the spreadsheet, I gave you the value of the pipe, which is what we originally paid for it, which is a total of about $560,000. The high bid on the, and Wheeler Metals didn't even bid on all of the pipe, but the high bid we received on the steel casing was about $61,000. So we can't, we can't sell it for that. And the other bid was way low, $1.77 a foot for 48-inch steel casing, which is, we paid $200 a foot for. So my recommendation is that we reject all bids. I'll probably want to put together a, an advertisement to sell the pipe. And what we'll do is just advertise it for the price that we paid for it. And I think, because that was three years ago now that we bought that, prices have gone up since then. So I think we will be able to sell it. We're just not going to be able to get rid of it all at one time, you know?
Well, thanks for the time you put into it. And, you know, I did a little math on it and it's roughly 90% of the original cost is what we'd get. So I'm all for your idea of trying to sell it. However, the public notice says in the paragraph under the, the box, and we're going to need a legal opinion on this, but the third or fourth sentence, let's see, one, two, three, I think it's fourth sentence, says winning bid will be awarded to the highest per foot offer per item.
But the last line?
Yeah, hit me. What did I miss? The right to refuse all bids. All right. Can those two exist in the same document?
Yes, we specifically put that language in there in order to be able to be at this point where if a bid was not acceptable, that could be rejected.
Fantastic. Do we need to make a motion to make that happen or to turn these down?
Do we need to do an official reject all bids at council?
No, there's no need to, for the council to reject the bid. Although if you, it could be advanced to council to do that, but I don't believe that's required by statute.
I spoke to the man at Wheeler Metals, he called to see if they had got the bid and I said no and that we didn't get very good bids, so we're probably going to reject all. And he said, no problem, so. And I can contact the other bidder and let them know the same thing.
I'm fine with that, but if, if it makes more sense to make sure that legally we've got that out there, the "I think" was the part that rattles around in my brain, that you don't think we need to do it, but I'll do whatever you say, Mr. Reitman.
I'll look into it and talk to Mr. Clark just to make sure.
Thanks.
A bid is a, is a request for an offer and we're rejecting, we're not accepting the offer. You have an offer and acceptance.
Great. And I, just let me ask, would anybody here have any objection to that hitting the city council without us sending it there, based on what he finds out? Okay.
That's a, if you want to follow protocol, you might want to. I mean, we can break protocol too.
We could always remove the other agenda.
And I appreciate your work. If y'all noticed the date, it's September 1st and James said it, he put it out for the bids to come in, not realizing that was Labor Day. So he came up here on Labor Day for a couple of hours to get these ready. So anyway, appreciate your work on that, James.
It's my fault for not noticing.
Laboring on Labor Day. Good for you. Thanks.
Yeah, we're both in the club together. I did the same thing.
All right, thank y'all.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Next, we have a discussion on the 2025 Street Improvement Bid Award. Mr. Latham?
Just the city opened bids last Thursday, 28 to 2 o'clock. We received only one bid, which was from APEC. We received only one bid, which was from APEC. It's a little bit more than what we spent last year. And I think probably what we'll do is probably just take out the, I think there was two, two quotes on doing some pothole stuff. I wasn't real impressed with the pothole stuff that they did on Barrington last year. So, we'll probably just not include the minor or the major potholes, which would save us roughly eighty or ninety thousand dollars. The other thing that this includes that we tried to do last year was what they call a crack seal and fogging. One of the main areas was on Clink that we were going to do. And there's some minor areas in some of the subdivisions that are included in here. So, they have a subcontractor who's going to be doing that, which is a good thing. Probably the biggest area is we're going to finish Bossinger from Fletcher all the way over to Wildcat, which will complete that run as you're coming out, South Point, and then everybody can run and eventually have traffic on. As you know, we're widening that corner there. Contractor is on Marsani. So, there'll be a nice way in to be able to get through there along with getting on four twelve. So, that's the, that's the big one. It's the two-inch overlay. There are some areas that will be looked at on Taldo Loop. I got a, Scott was, Scott was telling me about a time, I guess we had some ice or something, and, and they were trying to blow off some of the chip and seal, I guess, that was there. And he blew up the hole, the road came up. So, we're going to do some work on Taldo Loop. What'd you see in here?
Hey, I did not pay him to put that on here, y'all. I didn't.
No. You didn't have anything to do with it?
Nothing to do with it, but I'm glad it's on here.
You didn't have anything. Everybody worries about, it's kind of in their way. But we're picking and looking at the areas that we think are the most important for the integrity of the road. So, questions? Again, I don't think we'll do the minor or major pothole stuff.
Yeah, I've got some questions. So, I, these numbers are different from the bid numbers.
Right.
What, what are these numbers?
That was an estimate.
Okay, because we're, we're off by a considerable margin on several of these. So, but we've got one bid. I, I recognize that we certainly need to do this. One question I have is, why are we doing, and I, I understand in certain areas some of it, but I know that UTBWC, we're doing part of that on Taldo. I'm guessing we're doing fog seal, crack seal, and then putting?
They do, they do like a black top-looking thing. They seal that. They basically, it's a sealer over what they're.
The ultra-thin bonding, something, something, right? Okay, wearing coarse, I think is what they call it. Okay. And then, I only see one area, that's Bossinger, where we're doing the two-inch asphalt concrete hot mix.
That's on Bossinger.
Okay, so that's really good for them. I appreciate that. And then, wha, why is there leveling in chip seal versus whatever else on Floyd?
Still a dirt road.
Okay, so we're going to level it? And then, and then how do you chip seal a dirt road?
It's not, they're putting actually rock down first.
Okay.
Okay, and then they put the chip and seal on top of it.
All right. And do we have any idea of when Floyd will be no longer the last gravel dirt road in Tonnity Town?
I'm not aware of anymore. There is one road off of, I forget the name of it. We've been out there. There's been some controversy whether or not that's a private road, or it was told. Huh?
I think you're right.
Yeah, three, yeah.
What's the estimated time of completion on these?
Last year, it actually went almost till the end of the year.
So, these will be projects for next year?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
That Bossinger will be nice. What's that, about a quarter of an acre that they'll be paving? That's nice. Not a quarter of an acre, quarter of a mile, is what I meant. Quarter of a mile.
Anything else?
So, Mark, this four-hundred-and-eighty-one thousand dollar figure, you're, you're talking about backing out roughly eighty thousand? So, we're looking at a?
Well, it would be removing the, let's see, let's see, number five, which was minor pothole, which was estimated thirty-seven-five. And the major pothole would be forty-eight-five. I would recommend that. That way, we'd be pretty close to where I think we've allocated funds for.
And is the allocation the three oh seven, or is the estimate different than what we had allocated?
That was just an estimate. You know, last year, when we first did this, we didn't have any bids. We had to rebid it. So, I talked to Tomlinson. The problem they have a lot of these is, is that they don't do it all. I mean, you're talking about several different ways to be able to address a road. Tomlinson is the one that's doing the Managani Street. And he indicated that, you know, they don't do chip and seal, they don't do this, they don't do that. So, they have to get a, somebody else to do it. So, you know, I'm confident APEC is a major company. And they did a really good job last year on what we did.
Okay, so then, that new number, that new figure taking out that, that eighty-six thousand is three-hundred-ninety-five thousand, seven-hundred-seventy-eight dollars and thirty-five cents, which is still a fair amount above the three oh seven. So, do we, do we look at these roads and say, yeah, these roads all need all of this right now? Or do we try to back out the roughly ninety thousand dollars in that price?
I'd say we move forward. I'd say we move forward. It's only going to get more next year. So, if you delay something, it's only going to be more. So, you know, let's, let's go ahead and let's get it done.
Okay, so we're off by about twenty-five percent of that pricing. Is that, what, what is that from? That's materials, that's inflation? And how do we make sure that next year we, we get a little closer on that number? I mean, I, I understand a lot of this stuff's out of your control.
Well, I know, I would say that the, the amount of just cost right now, it's got to be high. I don't know if it's worth twenty-five percent, but I think we just bite the bullet and let's move forward. I mean, the roads are not getting any better.
So, that'll be on the twenty-six budget that you're preparing?
No, it's on this one.
It's on this budget. And we, so we need to come up with another eighty-eight thousand dollars? Okay, any ideas where we come up with that other eighty-eight thousand dollars?
Sure.
Okay. Can you share?
We've got reserves.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Can I, I mean, I, I kind of am hesitant with you, Tim. I'll just, you know, I'm putting this into my perspective on my, you know, thinking small instead of four-hundred-and-eighty thousand versus four-hundred thousand. I just put a mini-split in my garage. First company that came out, you know, I, I reached out to several companies, trying to get somebody to come out and meet me. Finally got one to come in. It's like seventy-five hundred bucks. I almost pulled the trigger, because they were the only one that came to me with a bid. But I ended up reaching out to some buddies, found another tech, got them out there, ended up costing me three thousand dollars. So, I saved four thousand dollars by not going with the first company and the only one that came. Is there any other companies that we could reach out to? And you said you'd reach out to Tomlinson?
You're going to have to rebid it. I mean, this has been officially advertised in the paper.
Yeah.
You know, stuff like that. I mean, you either reject it totally, which you're not going to get APEC to come back and bid on it.
Sure.
And like I said, I mean, the next one we talked to was Tomlinson, who's doing Managani. And he said, you know, they, they just don't do all this stuff. So, and then you're delaying it, you're getting into the winter time where you're not even going to be able to do it. Either you're going to reject it, forget about it, and then we'll look at something next year. Because I, I just don't see how in the world, by the time you go through another thirty days of bidding.
I get it.
And everything. I mean, you're, you're in the winter time.
I get it, but I can't.
We can't do this.
I can't make eighty thousand dollars just appear out of nowhere. So, we either got to make some cuts and, and save that eighty thousand that we're out, look at what we got in our reserves, or look at finding another company, just from point of mind.
You can't do it like you, Danny.
Do it.
You can't, we can't do it like you do.
Yeah, you got to put it out again.
I mean, oh, yeah, absolutely.
I hear you.
Your, your personal, your personal thing, you can go. We can't sit here and negotiate with somebody.
I didn't negotiate. I went out and found, you know, I went out and reso, got me, I, I problem solved and went out and found, you know, went out and found resources that could help. And I know you're great at that. One company that comes to mind is Arco Paving. I don't, if we reached out to Tomlinson and Tomlinson said, you know, they don't have enough resources to do it all, they'd have to subcontract it out. Honestly, that's not a bad thing. I mean, honestly, I'm sorry. They'd have to look at subcontracting it out, but I'm sure they could find people to do it if they don't want to. But reaching out to, like I think of Arco Paving, has anybody reached out to them and seen if they were interested?
I don't even know.
Yeah.
I mean, if they had an interest in it, why didn't they bid?
It could be as simple as they didn't even get the publication, you know? Could be. I mean, I'm just saying, it's not like.
They should have somebody looking for those things if they want the business.
I got people from different states that are calling me about the roof bid up here.
Yeah.
So, they must know something.
Okay.
We know the shapes of our roads. We talk about it all the time, the improvements needed on our roads. I'm, I'm good with this bid and I'm good moving forward with it.
And if it were anybody but APEC, I might share some of y'all's consternations. I don't, I know the engineer that's, that signed off on this project. They're not going to screw this up. They did a good job with what we've got before. We've got, we do have some surplus money to, it's, it's not a huge increase. I mean, we're not doubling the cost of the project. So, I'm, I'm making a motion that we move this forward to council.
I'm, I'm sorry, are you moving it forward as is or with the?
With the, with the two changes. Sorry. Thank you, Tim.
No, that's all right.
With the two changes to take off the pothole repair.
Can I ask another question before? I'm so sorry to interrupt you. I'm so sorry.
No problem.
Do impact fees pay for these? Can we use impact fees to pay for these? Can we use impact fees to pay for these changes?
No.
We cannot. Are we using bond money?
Again, that's ma, maintenance.
Okay, and bond money? This is maintenance, got it. Can't use any bond money on this. Okay. So, my concern isn't necessarily the cost, although that matters. I want to get our pricing right when we come out the gate.
Just remember, you're going to have to do this next year, and it could be another twenty-five percent.
I totally, I totally understand, which is why I would almost rather that we fix the potholes, too. It's a lot of money, and it's a lot more money than we, than we expected to spend. But Ms. Ibarra is correct. Councilmember Ibarra is correct. We talk about this all the time. We've got really messed up roads, and it's going to get more and more expensive. There is a motion on the table. I'm sorry to interrupt.
Not a problem.
But it might be something worth considering.
The only response I have to that is, I mean, you, you weren't satisfied a hundred percent with the pothole repairs from last time.
I wasn't. I mean, you could see, you could see what they did out there on, I mean, most of all, the work that they did last year was on North Barrington. And it still wasn't smooth. It was, I mean, it's not what I would call.
And our street department capable of managing pothole repairs?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. They do a good job. I mean, they're all around fixing holes.
All right, thank you. Yeah.
Okay, we had a motion and a second. Roach home.
Tim?
Yes.
Amber?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Misty?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Lose the council.
Moving on, we have a discussion on financial policy. Mr. Latham? Busy man.
Okay, we're getting ready to get into budget season. And what I wanted to do was give you a, what I call a financial policy statement, basically. And it really outlines how a budget ought to be put together. And the reason I give you this is, is you talked about fiscal control and planning are necessary to make sure that the city's current and future finances will remain sound. We just talked about James's sewer rate. I will tell you what I have here is not in a textbook. I didn't learn this in college. I definitely didn't learn it in a manual. This came up in my own experiences. And what you're looking at is, is that you have a budget, basically, you look at the total revenues that are to be brought in, and you look at it conservative, which basically Pat has done in the past. And you set up where eighty-five percent of that revenue goes to operating. And it starts to exceed that. Capital, which is not equipment, but it's actually capital that you're saving money back in order to be able to not have to go out and borrow money, what you guys are talking about. It's ten percent of your vehicle, or what they all call is fixed assets. And then, you know, you keep your reserves, which is basically about two percent. And I will tell you, I've done over thirty budgets in my lifetime. Actually, thirty-two, ranging anywhere from thirty-five million to eighty million dollars. And I've always done it this way. When I first took over in Siloan Springs, we had four hundred thousand dollars in reserves. When I left, we had eleven million. We paid cash for a new city hall. We paid cash for a new swimming pool. We paid cash for a new fire station. We bought eighty acres of property for a new park, which eventually they sold when I left to build a new high school that they have. But when you see, and, and James has just talked about, we, we talked about the capital. You know, as you told, we, we do have a ten-year capital plan. We're going to reevaluate that again. And we need to be tying that ten percent back into a fund of which then, when it comes time, like Ryan needs a fire truck, you have the money set aside to do that. So, what this does is outline, it looks at operating expenses, it looks at policies. We talked about the capital improvements plan. I do think most of that money, that ten percent, ought to be put into a separate fund. And then, when it comes time that you see in the capital that we have enough money, you pull the trigger and you move on. Talks about debt management. You know, I'm not a big debt guy. But it does create some policies regarding debt. I want you to look over it. I know if you had a chance to. I don't want to really get into details. It talks about revenue a little bit. It talks about reserves, which we already are doing, which is keeping six, six months of reserve in case some catastrophic event happens where, you know, we still have to pay our people to come in to work. And you might not have the sales tax to be able to provide it. But I'll be glad to, I know there's a lot here, but I did want to kind of focus on these guidelines that have been set aside. And I think if you really, really, really take this into perspective, it's going to be best for the long term for this city. And then, if you don't get into where you don't have any money, because you've got services that you got to provide here. Question? Any questions on it?
Just one. On page five, bullet point two, under revenues. The city will estimate its annual revenues by an objective analytical process. Do we have such analytical process in place now? Are you talking about a software budget managing tool? Or what, what did you have in mind here, if you could?
Well, I think, I think what I'm looking at is to make sure that we don't, you know, we don't try to overextend what we think our proposed revenues are. And then, all of a sudden, we get into a situation where we don't have the funds to be able to operate on that year, or we don't have enough money to be able to put back that we need to do. Now, I will tell you, one of the. Now, I will tell you, one of the things that is important is, is that when you look at operating expenses, that especially in public safety, your, uh, costs are gonna be more in personnel than they are in a lot of other areas. So you gotta be careful that you don't spend so much money on personnel. You don't have any money to operate or fuel up the police cars. So I think we're gonna try to work on maybe capping both on the fire and the police specifically. Making sure that a certain percentage of that doesn't exceed from a personnel standpoint. And, uh, so as we work through this budget, um, next year, um, hopefully, uh, we'll have some better numbers that you guys can look at. One of the things too is it talks a little bit about, you know, the different types of revenue that comes in. And, uh, of course, you know, we're pretty heavy on sales tax to be able to provide that. Most cities are anyway. Um, because we don't have, you know, I know a lot of people think their property taxes is high. Well, live in Illinois. Um, it's the highest property tax in the nation, even above California right now. So I lived there for sixteen years and I paid a lot of money. A lot of money. So, um, but we, we are seeing some increases on property taxes, which is a good thing. Uh, but it also asks us to review, and this is, this is interesting too, is this, everything that we do, whether it's business license, whether it's our permits, whatever it is, we need to evaluate whether or not we're, that's enough revenue to be able to process this. As you know, community development has always been one area that, you know, you bring in enough revenue, it's supposed to support what's there. Um, so it does make you look specifically at evaluating those each year, um, to make sure that we're covering our cost.
Thank you.
Which is important.
Yeah, I, I do too. Mr. Latham, I do have a couple of questions.
Yeah.
If you don't mind. Uh, so on the, um, uh, there's a, a phrase that's used here a few times and it's the, um, fiscal and budget policy measurements baseline.
Mm-hmm.
What is that baseline? Where do we get that baseline? Or are we just saying what the budget is?
Your baseline is your revenue. That's where you start.
Okay. So, uh, we're looking at the, um, the revenue for the city. Uh, about how much was that revenue last year? Or what are we attracted to this year?
Total or just for the general?
What, whatever number you're using for that baseline.
For general, it's roughly about six to six and a half million dollars.
Okay. So if we're looking at six and a half million dollars, uh, as an example, and we want, um, two percent of that to go to reserves, we want, um, what was it?
Three, no more than three percent. Three percent goes to what they call fixed assets, which your vehicles are.
Okay, so that's only a hundred ninety-five thousand dollars a year. Is that enough? And are, and are we within that parameter today?
I think it's enough.
Well, I think it's enough too, but I guess more importantly is are we?
Well, I mean, it's, it's gonna gain you almost six hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year that you can put into a fund that's gonna be able to support some of the stuff. I mean, Ryan and I have been looking at property right now, you know, out west, cause there's gonna have to be a new fire station out there. So, you know, if you continue to kind of build that up.
And that counts as a fixed asset?
Mm-hmm. No, not fixed assets.
Okay, so, but I'm talking about, I'm talking about fixed assets in this particular case. So when we go to buy a, um, a, a police car for Captain Bowen, we, we might spend forty to sixty grand on that, right? We go to buy a fire truck, we, we spend well over a million, right? So it, that one ninety-five doesn't quite cover that. So I, I just wanna make sure that, that the numbers work.
But, you know, when you look at the general fund, I mean, there's, besides the fire and police, the rest of them don't have, I mean, the only vehicle that I have in my community development is for Roger Duncan, who's the inspector. There's nobody else in that department besides James's crew that has a vehicle. So most of all, your expenses are gonna be in your fire and police. They're not gonna be in the administrative side.
Sure. No, I, I, I'm not, I, I don't intend in any way to sound like I'm fighting this. I think it's a great idea. I just wanna make sure that our numbers are working. So if we use, for instance, annual payments on our principal and interest on all long-term debt, should not exceed twenty percent of total city revenue, that's one point three million. So we need to, again, either make those numbers correct or, or, or do something different. And then, uh, annual payments on short-term debt should not exceed ten percent, which again is about half that, six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, and then, um, you had mentioned, uh, and I love this too, that we'll try to keep our per capita general obligation debt at less than five thousand. Uh, if we do have an eight thousand dollar number today, that's roughly forty million dollars in debt. Um, a- about how much do we have in debt today?
Well, all you have on the general is the fire station, which is, I think, maybe down to about five point three.
And what about the bonds? Does that not count in the same way?
Well, yeah, I guess you would say it does count the bonds.
But we're less than thirty? Okay. All right. Thank you. Uh, well put together. I really appreciate all the hard work that went into it. And, uh, thanks for taking the time to answer my question.
Just remember, as we get into budget, this is gonna be kind of our guideline. So when it's presented to you all and you'll get to see the capital, I mean, this, the ten-year capital, you'll see that targeted on when we actually would have the funds to be able to do that. That's so important. It's so important that we, we get a little more better hold instead of getting out here and starting writing uh, checks that we really shouldn't be paying for.
All right. Next, we have a five-minute intermission. Five minutes.
Whoever called for that, thank you.
Ambivalence on this was a comment made, uh, by Mr. Latham about bringing permitting under the community development planning. Uh, I think this is a pretty good idea. It helps streamline the process uh, and make sure that, uh, procurement of the licenses are done under the people who are responsible for enforcing the code. Uh, the current code, one ten point O two B, provides for the code enforcement officer, officer to keep uh, licenses, uh, enforce all provisions under the code. So it just makes sense to uh, put the procurement of those licenses under it. Only thing that, um, you know, I wanted to make sure is clear on B, and that, that, this is up to you guys, um, on the redlined copy towards the back of the packet. Um, on B, uh, all applications required here under shall be, and I thought maybe adding obtained, comma, kept and filed by the, uh, um, community development director or his or her designee with the city planning department. I don't know if it's necessary, uh, but it just makes people know, make sure that people know that the place, when you, when you come to apply for a business license, that the place you're, or the person you're gonna see is the community development director to obtain that license. So, um, I might like to add that just to make sure it's, it's crystal clear that the only place that you're gonna get a business license is uh, through the community development director.
I'm sorry, Mike. Would you please say once more?
Yes.
That's B, that's the first sentence. Here under shall be?
Obtained, kept and filed.
Okay.
And.
So just adding the word obtained to this copy?
Yeah. I mean, it filed is already in there.
Oh, okay.
So I'm just adding the word obtained.
I wrote it all out.
You know, I, I, and that may or may not be necessary. I don't know, but I think it just, uh, it tightens it up a little bit more to make sure that they're, um, if, if the community development, we have a code enforcement officer, um, now that's under planning and community development umbrella as it is. So it only makes sense that they have paid the licenses, uh, from them to, since they're responsible for enforcing it.
So then my question is, um, there at, at the bottom of B, where it says community development director or designee within the city planning department.
Right.
And bear the signature of the appropriate designated official, which would be again, either the community director or that does it, the other designee.
Yes.
Who, who would designate that designee?
The community development director.
Okay. So only the community development director can designate that designee. It comes
Yes.
directly through the community development director.
This doesn't take away any, uh, uh, I mean, uh, any, I mean, the mayor is still responsible for.
Sure, it just makes it more simple, right?
It just, it just takes something out of, there's enough, um, that already is handled by the mayor and, and her office. So it just puts it in, into the, uh, hands of the people who are responsible for enforcing the code, so.
I think that makes sense.
And Mr. Latham brought it up at the last meeting, so, you know, it, it seems to make sense to me.
Well, also, I would like to say that, uh, it does help because anyone that's coming in to get any kind of license, they have to go to Megan, then they have to go to Maddie, then they have to go back to Megan, then they have to go, so it was kind of, sorry. So it's kind of going back and forth and this really will help us if it is like this. Um, then we have to also, after all that, we have to get the, uh, fire chief as well. Um, so this really will help us.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor.
I'd make a motion to, uh, move this to city council with the, uh, revisions of in, uh, part B, that we add the words, uh, shall be obtained, kept and filed to the enforcement code, or to the, uh, community of development.
Obtained, obtained, does it matter what the word is?
Obtained.
Does it matter?
Yes.
Obtained.
I'm sorry?
Mr. Eichman, you, I don't know if you, you may have been on the phone when I said, uh, okay. Uh, okay. I just think it just, uh, solidifies it and makes it clearer.
Well, I will second that motion.
Roll call.
Amber? Yes. Daniel?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Misty?
Yes.
Moving to council.
Next, we have a discussion on the citizen comments segment. Mr., well, Danny, go ahead.
Uh, well, I just wanted to bring this up. Um, I've noticed here in the last couple of meetings, um, we've had some, um, tense moments in the comments from citizens. Um, so I have talked with a couple of people, um, here in city and talked about what we could do to help lessen that. Um, and even if we don't lessen it, um, we at least remind others of, you know, the proper procedures of how to come to the mic and bring items in front of us. Um, a couple of things that I have come together on doing, and again, I just wanna have a discussion. Get y'all's feedback on it. I'm not trying to bring anything to city council at this point. Um, but, uh, two of the things, or three of the things I thought of, um, was eliminating the citizen comments section from up at the beginning and only allowing comments to come before items that are put on the agenda. Um, I feel that one's a little tricky cause you're taking away a portion where a citizen has a, uh, opportunity to speak their mind. Um, so I thought of maybe, instead of doing that, we would, uh, do written comments or sign up um, so that those comments could be written down rather than spoken. Um, another idea that was floated out was having, um, two different comment sections where perhaps we have actual citizens of Tawny Town in one portion and then um, public comments. I feel there's a difference between citizen comment and public comment. Um, and our agenda says comments from citizens. Um, so that was another idea. Those are the three things I kinda.
Specifically, Councilmember Montez, you mean, um, the difference between somebody who lives in town, pays taxes in town versus somebody who does not?
Correct.
Okay. So, uh, I'm, I'm a first amendment guy and, and I, I, I want people to be able to come and comment.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, uh, I, I, I mean, I, I'm not necessarily opposed to anything that you've said. I think it's just a matter of trying to work that through and
Yeah.
and get where it goes. Um, if they're, you know, citizens versus the public, or we just call the whole thing public comments or whatever. I mean, we, we haven't ever done anything to restrict a non-citizen, I don't think, right?
Not to my knowledge.
And I don't think it's in our code. Maybe Ms. Eichman would, would know that better. Uh, do we need, I mean, I, I certainly don't wanna just go sit in another meeting, but do we need something like a workshop or do you wanna come back to us with some ideas and, and present something?
My intention was to bring it here and kinda have that discussion here in a public forum.
Okay.
Uh, if you had, uh, I mean, if there's citizens that have comments or if y'all have feedback, kinda think of what we could do, um, if you want. It could be something that falls to the wayside and we do have a, you know, a, a work session and then we come with something to, uh, have Mr. Eichman draft. I mean, yeah, I just like to start here with, uh, any kind of open comments on it and a discussion. Kinda like I did on the, on the adding a second comment section for city council members up at the top, so that we have two times to, uh, discuss items that sometimes I personally, uh, leave out that I'd like to get out first in the meeting. But, uh, yeah. This is just on the other end of the comments.
Okay, so, um, I understand having comments before each item because it's very specific to each item, right?
No, and that's kinda what planning commission does. I mean, planning commission, they have a come before us and talk about anything you want. And then every item that they have, they have, um, a comment portion on each agenda item. Um, so, yeah, yeah.
And it could be argued that that could make meetings longer because somebody could speak each time, but w- already they could do that and they get the public comment section too, right?
Uh, I mean, usually the chairs, um, regulate that. If it's something that's on the agenda, they'll tell them, your time will come for that later if it's, you know, if you're discussing something that's already on the agenda. But, yeah, I guess there's that opportunity.
Yeah, but I, I mean, I, I don't mind if the public wants to speak more.
Absolutely.
Uh, I, I kinda like that idea. I also like the idea of the written comments, but I think the benefit of the written comments, because again, we wanna be transparent, we wanna be able to communicate with people, et cetera, is if, I don't know if we are then allowed to have a moment where we respond to written comments. Mr. Eichman, is that something that we could do? If we had written comments before a meeting, they were published, they were part of the packet?
It's, it's your, it's the council's meeting, so they can, you can set up, you know, whatever processes you want to take comment or or respond back to it.
Cause that would be better than what we have now. Where people come in, they share their heart about something and we just stare at them.
Well, we still are not gonna reply to it. I mean, if we get written comments the night of the meeting or whatever.
It would have to be before. I think that would hit the packet.
Well, and then the other thing?
But that's hard, isn't it?
The other, yes.
Cause how do you give written comments when you have?
I'm dead set against written, but that's just me personally.
Yeah, that, that makes sense.
Let me stop.
That is good for, for the people writing their, their comments, dude. I mean, that is a point, uh, uh, that probably should be addressed, that, that people uh, do have questions and we can't have an exchange with them. And when they bring legitimate concerns to us, I, 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 I think I did mention this before, if, if they wanna write out a question to present to us that we can consider and don't have to answer on the fly, something that may take some, uh, thought to do, um, you know, uh, of course, they can always email us too and, uh, um, we should be responsive to those emails uh, if they ask us a question. Um, you know, I, I think when they have questions that they're looking for more from us, you know, looking for an answer from us. I, I don't know how we address that, but, uh, either in the form of written questions, uh, to be submitted, it's not a bad way to do it.
I have a, a thought to add to what you just said.
Thank you.
I definitely, um, like the way we have it where we're not engaging, cause I could see that getting contentious. Um, but if, if they come and present whatever their concern is, it gives us some time to do research, look into it, and then we can make sure that, I, I think that we can reply back, send them an email response. I mean, since we can't answer right then and there, if we're not doing engagements, which would be what I would be for, not, not doing, um, engaging back, but definitely get them a response.
I think that's fair.
If we can.
I think it's fair to respond to.
It is awkward for them to come up with their
It is.
and then we, we're just staring at you and you have no, we have nothing to offer you. Thank you for your comment though. This is kinda how you feel.
Thank you, Ms. Ibarra. Thank you, Ms. Ibarra.
Mr. Aldner, would you like to make a citizen comment?
You know me, I've got to speak. Okay, Rhonda Dowdno, 462, Posey Lane, still there. Okay, you know me, I can get up here and yak for the best of them. Comments are a good thing for the citizens to be able to voice their viewpoint, what they're thinking, what they're feeling, but it also can be abused. And being up here is a privilege to speak to this council, and when you spend your whole time annihilating, and I've done it a few times, but not my whole time, I do not get up here and pick fights. I will put out my facts and I move on, but this has turned into a bloodbath. You know, how do I put this? I was raised that your friends and your family and other people, when they fail, you help lift them up, you help them, you, you point them in the right directions. Have you made mistakes? Every one of you have made mistakes up here on a regular basis. But you guys seem to tear this woman down. You can see it in her eyes tonight, she's not here, she's lost her light, because it's pick on her time every time she sits in this seat. Who in the heck in their right mind would ever want to sit in a seat up here? Nobody. You're not bringing your community together, you're tearing her down so she'll leave her seat, so somebody can move into that seat or be appointed one of the pocketmen. Because I noticed Mr. Mike Zupo showing up at meetings. Guarantee he'll be a pocketman stepping into a seat come of this next election. This stuff has to stop. Nobody can fix this but you guys. You have to work together. You got to want to work together. You don't sit and tear each other apart up here. It's embarrassing to watch. The agenda deal? Come on. May these people leave because it wasn't on the agenda. This is a joke. There's times you pick and choose your battles, and this is getting ridiculous. I say get rid of the comments until you can behave yourself and not point fingers at people. I don't like that crap either, and picking fights from a distance on everybody's part. So again, everybody needs to be treated fairly when they get up there, if you're going to let them speak, but when you get up here, it's a privilege. It's not a, a punching. We just might as well buy you guys some boxing gloves and stick you out here in the middle and watch you fight, because it's embarrassing. Work together. That's all I've ever asked you guys to. Work together for the community as a whole, not certain individuals. That's my problem, always has been. May not like me, don't care. I just want my community to get along, us to thrive, not to pick and choose who you like.
Okay, so anyway, council, I want citizens to be able to speak. I don't want citizens to use profanity. Obviously, we've got people who like us and people who don't. It's probably true of all of us. I am more interested in what Mr. Eichman sees in other cities that he represents. Obviously, everybody does a little differently.
I do.
What are some best practices you can share?
They do. I think it, it, so obviously, once you open the public forum up, we can't regulate the content of the speech, so people are going to come up and, and express their viewpoint, and that's, that's what the, the purpose of that is for. I see it slightly different in, 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 in different cities, but a constant usually is that, you know, the meeting is here for the council in order to do business, and while you do want to take public input, that, you know, that it has to be gauged with the time that you have to, to devote to, you know, the, the, the people's business, and so usually, I think where other cities have come down, and it's like, you know, this is telling the public, if you want to speak on a matter, this is your time, come up and say your point, but it's not a question and answer, because you have a month between regular meetings, you have a Cal meeting where, where you guys, you know, typically hear the items before they come up to city council meetings, so there's, there's good amount of time in between your meetings for constituents to reach out, email, call, meet you, talk, ask those questions, or come to city hall and talk to a department head, or talk to a employee, or talk to the mayor. So, you know, generally, that's the way that, that you see it run, but I, I, I work in another city where, where they kind of will take down public comment and then respond to questions at the next meeting, but that requires quite a bit of administrative work. So I think you got to, got to weigh that.
I love that. I think that's a great way to look at it. It is the people's business, and so we do need to hear from the people to some extent, but maybe we limit to a timeframe. I, I don't necessarily like that either, because again, I think people have a right to speak, but maybe some of that is just getting the handle on.
And, and it might be, too, you know, just some direction from who, who's ever chairing, like if somebody has a question that a department head who's here can answer, you can direct them right now and say, you know, go speak to police chief, or go speak to James, or we could speak afterwards. If, if they literally, if they're coming up here asking questions, they're probably coming to the wrong forum to do those type of things. They, they, they probably just need to show up and actually talk to somebody, but, you know, usually like a statement at the beginning, saying this is your time to speak your piece on, on, you know, an issue that's affecting the, the city and kind of treat it as such. So that's one option, but, you know, you can, you can, again, it's, I, I firmly believe this, it's your meeting, and you guys know how to kind of address the concerns of the city better than I can tell you how others do it. I mean, so I think it's, it's up to you guys to craft, and there's not a, really a wrong way.
What, what if, just, just a thought, you know, our city council meeting is, is where we, we are voting on the decisions that were discussed at Cal. What if Cal were the only meetings, meeting that we actually allowed the citizen comments? Just eliminating one of the meetings, allowing it at the other where we're discussing anyway. And then I really like the, the comment of if, if they bring up a question and one of the department heads are here, that's a good way to direct them. They're not always here, but, and then, of course, we could take that down and try to get them an answer. Another thought I had, actually, it wasn't mine, it was somebody else's, moving the citizen comments to the, to the end of the meeting, rather than at the beginning.
I heard Mr. Montez say that earlier, and
Did you say?
Oh, I thought you did. I'm sorry.
This talked about two opportunities for
Okay. I, I think one of the concerns that I would have is if, if it's after all the dust settles after the voting, then we haven't gotten an, an input to see if, like, I mean, every now and then, more than every now and then, we get great input from people, right? I think another thing that's important is as public officials, right, we need to listen to people, and some of us just need to thicken our skin up a little bit, right? This isn't fun, and there are times when we get persecuted. You guys have seen me get persecuted. In fact, I would argue I get persecuted a little more than, than some others. And, and there are people that get aggressive, there, I've been blackmailed, nothing to blackmail me over, but I've been blackmailed. And there are just crazy things that happen, right? But the persecutors don't run. The persecutors aren't the ones that are in the seats. We are. I think it's important that we listen to them, but not everybody out here likes me. In fact, I'd suspect easily half the people in town are mad at me at any given time. And if we're doing it right, it's probably true of all of you, too. So I'm not saying we don't have comments because some people are mean, some people are nasty, some people think I need to read a book on self-deception. By the way, there's a good one. Jeremiah 79 says, "The hardest deceit of all things and desperately sick." It's a good book. So, so what? Let them talk, but inasmuch as we have to allow this body to do the governance that we're elected to do, we got to do it. How we get there, I don't know. I love your idea.
And I, I have just one thought to add, if you don't mind.
Please, go right ahead.
So I, I wouldn't be taking away their comments between
Mm-hmm, each item.
Our items. So it's only just the general comments moved to the end, which would not eliminate, like, you know, any, any influence that they would have.
Totally for that. Totally for that. I could absolutely agree with that.
Thank you, Amber. I was going to point that out. I was going to say, yeah, every item that we have brought before us would have that comment section or that opportunity for comment, but if we move it to the bottom.
Thank you for clarifying that. I'm sorry I misunderstood it.
No.
So I was at, if I can speak.
Please, I'm sitting here not knowing what to say.
So I was at a meeting with mayors and judges and attorneys a couple of weeks ago, and this was one of the subjects that was brought up, and there was several mayors that told me what they had done at their meetings, and one of the things was they had a citizen comment time after every subject, and that's it. They either wrote in, emailed, called, or came up to the city. And they said, the gentleman told me, the mayor told me at the time, he said that he had, it was getting out of hand in his city of 37,000 people, and that's what he did, and he said it worked like a dream. There was another one that told me that they just completely did away with citizen comments altogether, period, and they said that worked like a dream. But I do feel like the citizens need to speak, and I feel like this is a business meeting, and I feel like that they should speak on the subject that's on the agenda and not take it, whatever it's, you come up here and you talk about all this other stuff, and not anything on the agenda, it makes our minds go somewhere else, and we can't, sometimes can't get it back. And if it's at the very end of the meeting, I think that, you know, if we have to have it at all, then I think it should, in my opinion, should be at the end of the meeting.
But I am a little confused, because one of the first things we say is you can talk about anything that's not on the agenda.
Right. And you just, but you'd have to move that to the end.
But we can reword, yeah, we can reword that, yeah. So like, you're saying before each agenda item, we can still let people talk that's on point.
Correct.
And then if they just have some general something, they sort of have to last out the meeting to do it, but they can comment on anything in general.
Can I add something?
Please. I mean, I'm not
Can I speak?
Sure, please.
When we have the citizen comments during the items that we are discussing, or you guys are discussing, some of these items don't even pertain to the city's business, its personal business. I don't think a citizen should have to or be able to comment on somebody else's personal business. City business is one thing, somebody else's business is theirs.
So do you think we should just take, I'm sorry.
Please.
Can I ask a question? I know it's your meeting, Larry, I'm sorry. So do you think that we should just have it at the very end, or take it back?
No, that's not what I just said. I said, during each item, if somebody comes in and says, "I've got to rezone, I want to rezone my property," well, maybe that's not a good example, well, maybe it is, but anyway, it's their, it's their personal business.
Right.
It's not a city business, it's not have anything to do with an ordinance, it doesn't have anything to do with a resolution.
But what if it's a neighbor?
If it's a public, if it's public, if they have to go through public hearings and things like that, then yes, but there are some things that are not their business that has come through
Agreed.
more than one time.
Agreed.
And I think they should just stick it, stick to city business.
Sounds like we might need to workshop this.
Yeah.
It's a great idea, and I'm glad you brought it up, but there's, there's a lot, there's a lot there.
And we may need to look at the code concerning
Yes, exactly. See what the code allows us to do, too.
I know that's not what you had in mind, Councilmember Montez, but thanks for bringing it up. What else? What else do you think we ought to think about before we circle back?
How about if any citizens have any ideas, they can email your alderman with their suggestions.
That's a great idea.
To what you might want to offer to make this process effective, because I, too, don't want to squash the First Amendment. That's, that's not.
And that was, that was the very first question I asked Justin, well, actually, I was standing up here, and Justin told me that we do not have to offer citizen comment.
But I've heard a lot, I've, I've heard some different things that I haven't heard before, so we probably need to discuss this further. I don't, I don't care how y'all want to do it, if you want to do it, in a workshop, might be better. Yeah, I know everybody hates those, but, you know, it, there, there were things brought out that, that were new, so.
Do you want to schedule one, or have, I'll have Megan schedule one, if you guys tell me a time?
I'm pretty full all month. I'll be in Fort Smith almost all month during the week, so I don't know if people are adverse to Saturday morning workshops, but
You bring it to you.
No way, no, I'm Mike, you are crazy.
I know, I'm sorry, but my September
What if we, what if sometime in October? Sometime in October?
Yeah, just pick a day, well.
She did pick a day.
October will be better. I'll make
How about January, Mike? Can you clear your schedule?
I will, I will make a day work in October.
Give you a couple of months.
I promise.
Okay.
All right. So workshop it is. All right, moving on, comments from our council. Mike?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I mean, well, first of all, I don't expect to get paid for this Cal meeting. I don't think it's, because it was, you know, whatever happened was beyond our control. I'm not excited about having to come back twice in a row, but in good conscience, I don't think any of us would have felt good about being here, getting the agenda so late. It's really difficult to discuss some of these matters intelligently when you get, and I, I had no access to my email on Tuesday anyway. As you saw, I came in at 6:15, so I appreciate the fact that we got this done so quickly and moving it to Thursday, so, you know, I, I hope that we can avoid this happening again in the future, and, and, and obviously, I think we need to address this, and, you know, Megan's in a tough spot, I don't blame her for what happened, you know, so, anyway, that's my point on that. Captain Bowen, thank you for your comments, appreciate you coming forward, you know, and, you know, Pastor Schmidt brought out a good point, too, you know, the, all the differences of opinions that, that come forward here. You know, we learn from people who think differently, where we should learn from people who think differently than we do. I, I, I think our council does a pretty good job. We don't always agree with one another, but we, we have not, in, in the three years that I've been here, I don't know any one of us that has had a personal attack on another council member in here, but, so, we don't agree all the time, it's obvious, we, we tied two votes, and, you know, but the differences of opinion that are brought forward to us, you know, they, they make us think, and, you know, I've learned a few things, a lot of things here, so I appreciate all the input, certainly don't want to eliminate the input from the public, that would be, you know, you want to talk about fascism and communism, that's about as fascist as it gets, but thanks, everybody, for coming out, thanks for sticking with us for a long meeting, and have a good night.
Tim?
Thank you. You know what? This role is not for the teary, it's not for the weary, and sometimes you got to put on our big boy pants, and big girl pants, sorry, I don't mean to be sexist, but we do need accountability, we do need to support our First Amendment rights, but we've got to be careful in the way that we allow the public to speak. There has been threatening, you guys have seen it. We had a, a comment earlier of a person who said that they only do it a couple of times, but you've seen it. There has been profanity in this chamber, you've seen it. You've seen extraordinarily aggressive behavior, both here and outside. It's just part of the fun, and it's not okay for us to prop up one side or the other, but I do think it is our responsibility to, number one, support each other. There's not a person on this council that I haven't supported publicly and privately in the entire time that I've been here, but we also need to hold each other accountable, and we need to make certain that we're making the right decisions for the right reasons, and, and I don't mean necessarily over the health of this or that, but for every one of us, the comment was, every one of us have messed up on something. Yeah, that's right. Yeah, that's right. And here's what you do when you mess up. You admit what you did. You apologize for what you did. You say, "This is what I'm going to do to make it right." You make it right, and you tell everybody what you did to make it right. So the idea of threatening and profanity has got to stop. The idea of hiding behind our hurt feelings has got to stop. If you're too thin-skinned for the role, please don't run again. If you're too thin-skinned for the role, please just step out now. It's hard, I admit. I spend hours on these packets. I spent hours on this packet. So we didn't have a meeting Tuesday because I couldn't do that. But we're fiduciaries, and we've got to do what's right. So honestly, I just don't bother to listen to those who want to be profane, to those who want to attack and be aggressive. I literally don't listen to their calls. I don't listen to their emails. I don't communicate with them. And if that works for you, good.
Just thank you, everybody, for coming out. We had a lot of good discussions, and that is it.
Misty?
One, I want to address, we called this a workshop. We will not be getting paid twice. That was very clear Tuesday night, so I just want to clarify that. I fully understood. I'm here on my own accord tonight. I'm not getting paid a second time. Second, it's no fun that we had to move it tonight, but we're constantly, especially this year, being told we're not following code. And we are trying to follow code. So it wasn't fun to come back a second time this week. I had to move some stuff around myself. But we're trying to do our best, and we're trying to do our code. We can't change the past. All we can change is the future. And so we're taking our learnings, and we're continuing to move into the future. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Danny?
I want to thank everybody for coming out. Yeah, I kind of echo the same thing over the meeting. It's unfortunate, but we're just following procedure. I think that's probably one of the things that I try to hold myself to is procedure and keeping to a procedure. So I want to thank Mr. James Clark and Mark Latham for all the work they've done on a lot of these items in here. I mean, there's lots of work in there, but from all city employees, but just a lot of stuff to go over tonight, so I want to thank them for their time. And thank each and one of everybody up here on the bench. Everybody have a good night.
All right. First and foremost, I didn't do it during the meeting, but I was going to make a motion that we not accept pay for tonight because we were paid before. So I'm in on not getting paid tonight, although we have a special immediately after this. So still no pay, as far as I'm concerned. Mr. Wagner, you made a statement earlier about at least we have sewer, and I think you are in large part responsible for that, and thank you. Let's see. Tim? I am sorry that mold affects your family the way it does, and I'm sorry that we went the way we did. But, you know, hopefully, they can come up here part of the time anyway.
That's kind of you. Thank you.
And there again, thanks to each and every one of you back there. Great staff. That's all I've got.
Okay, thank you. I want to apologize to the citizens and council for having to be here tonight. It was due to the agendas not being out on time. We thought they had gone out, and they had not. Again, I apologize for the inconvenience that this has caused everyone. We did have a staff meeting today, and we discussed the very issue of the agendas and getting them out on time. Megan came up with a protocol. We've got it right here, and I have it for you guys if you'd like to see it. We also, she is going to put, I'm not IT savvy, but she's going to put a received message on her computer, so whenever someone opens it, she'll know that they've received their agenda, and so will I. And that will help eliminate the issues. And hopefully, as we move forward, we will not do this again. And I will make sure that she sends a copy of this to you guys tomorrow. I also want to state that I take full responsibility for the audit. I was not trying to throw anybody under the bus or shirk my responsibility. I was trying to direct you to the person that can give you the best information, the information that I can't give you. Because I don't know anything about water and sewer. I don't know anything about different types of planning. I don't, you can't know everything. I know certain parts of it. I know the minimal parts of it. But I can't know everything. So that's why I have department heads or people put in place that does have the knowledge that they can give me. And I try to give you the best information that I can. And if I offended you or upset you, I apologize profusely because you are the, you know so, so much more about IT stuff than I run to you because I don't know it. And I do want to let you know that. But again, we try to work together. I always get a second or third or more than that opinion on decisions so I can make the best decision for this city. And I make sure that I go to the person that has the knowledge that they can give to me. So thank you, guys. Also, on a lighter note, Family Fun Day will be September 13th. I hope everyone will be able to come out. We do need donations to help make this event function properly. Halloween in the Park will be October 31st. Thank you, guys.
What donations do you need for the Fun Day? Is that money or stuff?
Yes. We have first, second, third prize for a Vochi Ball. We have trophies that we have to pay for. So yes, we need funding, cash funding.
Mr. Ragman?
No comments. Thank you, council.
All right. I seek a motion for adjournment.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
We've got a meeting.
All right, now, in one minute, we have a special meeting.
One minute.
One minute.
Tim?
Here.
Amber?
Here.
Mike?
Here.
Misty?
Here.
Daniel?
Here.
Larry?
Here. Next, approval of agenda. I seek a motion.
Make a motion to approve?
I'll second.
Roll call.
Hang on. Who's second?
I was.
Larry?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Misty?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Amber?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
All right. Our new business is an approval of a resolution authorizing offer of judgment.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Amber?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Misty?